Nancy, Lorraine, Seth.
I am ready.
All right, we will let Seth do his magic. And then we'll do our thing.
You should, as you can probably monitor your screen.
Okay, it looks like everyone that wants to be in is in. Yes. We are now live on Facebook. All right, so we will call this meeting to order. This is the April 6th meeting of the Town of Situate Select Board. And in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency, Town of Situate meetings, public meetings shall be held remotely until further notice. Sorry, only have half a screen here. And will be recorded and will be viewed live on Situate Community Television Live. And tomorrow they'll be available on Channel 9 as well as YouTube for Situate Community Television. So with that, when we do get to the public portion of the meeting, we will ask you to raise hand function in the reactions or take your video off. But for now, I'd like to call for an acceptance of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Move, Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Curran. Because we are remote, all votes must be taken by pro call.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Curran. Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0. We have an acceptance of the agenda. And according to that, well, before we go into the Zoom and Walk-ins, I just wanted to note that our 7:50 discussion vote on nitrogen loading limitation septic system has been withdrawn by our public health, our Department of Public Health, so that will not be addressed this evening. I also want to note that this is the first meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Situate that has a policy that our meeting is to have an endpoint of 11:00 p.m. unless the board votes to extend. So I'm excited to try to meet that deadline tonight. And I want to do a quick shout out, thank yous to everyone that had participated in the joint meeting of the Select Board Advisory Meeting last week. It was a preview of our annual town meeting, which takes place next Monday. I'm sure Jim will speak more of that. And later in the agenda, we will be assigning our speaking roles and that. If you'd like to see that whole meeting in total, you can go to YouTube, Situate Community Television, and you can find the link to that meeting. And if you're like me and you like paper, the annual report is now available on, you can get them, I believe, at Town Hall in the Selectman's Office, like Board's Office. And it does have a printed version of the warrant that we will be discussing. The last shout out I'd like to do is to everyone that participated on Sunday with the visit from the Easter Bunny and Mother Nature, who did another spectacular ride around town. And thank you so much to everyone that made that possible, especially Mother Nature, who's an amazing organizer, our Situate Police Department, the Situate Fire Department, and a huge shout out to the most unsung hero of the day, Mr. Seth Pfeifer, who rides around backwards so that we can film that and make that available to folks that might have missed it. So thanks for that. And the last thing I just want to say before we go on is we had another huge milestone on Sunday. And a big shout out from the board to Ms. Mara Curran, who celebrated her birthday. So that's all I have. I know she's going to be mad about that.
No.
I would like to then move on to our Zoom-in or Walk-ins or whatever we want to call them. If you would like to address the board on a matter not on the agenda, would you please use the raise hand function or take your video on and raise hand? Oh, we got, all right, Ellen. Ellen Casper, would you please identify yourself for the record? Oh, hold on, you're still muted. Sorry, tech, oh, wait, we're never going, I'll stop touching things. Okay, there you are. Name and address to the board, please.
Hi, Ellen Casper, 120 Gilson Road. I just wanted to read my email into the record. We, the neighbors, went ahead and did a peer review of Epsilon's acoustic report. And we submitted it to the board, so I just wanted to read that into the.
That's fine, Ellen. We did receive that. And I have spoken with our clerk, and that has been noted as correspondence. And it will be, when we, you know, you'll see on the agenda, we have correspondence. She was, she absolutely will be reading that for the record. So.
Okay.
It, you're welcome to do it now. It's redundant. And we've got an 11 o'clock hard stop, so.
All right, I'll read quick. I'll read very quick. On March 3rd, 2021, you provided me with a response to my question regarding our ongoing concerns with the Epsilon testing process and the resulting report. Based upon the preliminary peer review submitted to the Board of Selectmen, we felt that there was a valid basis for a comprehensive peer review of Epsilon's work. Here's the question I posed along with your response. My question, why are neighbors being denied a peer review to validate Epsilon's findings? And your response, the neighbors are entirely welcome to commission a peer review of the Epsilon report. Please be advised, the affected wind turbine neighbors commissioned Rob Rand, a member of the Institute of Noise Control Engineering since 1993, a member of the Acoustic Society of America to conduct a peer review of Epsilon's acoustic monitoring report, published March 6, 2020, entitled "Sound Level Compliance Evaluation Report." We've constantly brought up the fact that Epsilon's testing protocol was not approved by the MASTEP. LEQ is an averaging scheme which Epsilon employed to degrade MASTEP's regulatory framework. Mr. Banger had participated and was made clear that any adoption of LEQ would require use of an adjustment factor that wasn't used. These documents have been submitted to the BOS. MASTEP's Seth Pickering responded October 20, 2020, to Dave Darty's questions about the use of LEQ. And he verified there is no MASTEP guidance document, which shows that LEQ is a proper metric for compliance testing. And MASTEP policy for compliance testing has historically employed LMAX. Epsilon failed to employ this metric, thereby understating maximum noise levels created by the wind turbine. We continue to suffer problems from the wind turbine. So we're requesting that you allow Mr. Rand's attached peer review to be entered into the public record, discussed in upcoming BOS meeting, and invite Mr. Rand to answer any of your questions and/or explain his technical memorandum.
Thank you very much for reading so quickly. We might invite you back at 10 o'clock to make a proper donation. We did receive the hard copies, so the board is aware of the full content of that. Thank you for that. It's duly noted into the public record by your reading it. And we will, obviously, it's a Zoom and Walk-in, it's not. So we will consider the matter in the future on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Mr. Darty. Hold on. First question for you. Are you back from Florida yet? Wait, you're, you're still muted.
Yeah, there you go. Hello?
Hi, David. Would you mind giving your name and address for the record, please?
David Darty, 122 Gilson Road. First of all, I just want to say you're taking a step in the correct direction with your summertime shutdown that you were a month or so ago. What this did is constitute a public acknowledgement by you, the Selectmen, and many others, that the wind turbine is a nuisance and it's impacting the lives of the residents of this town. The evidence is clear that the burden of financial responsibility is upon Situate Wind and not the Town of Situate. The turbine is in violation of its permit as well as the state nuisance laws. Additionally, with the continued complaints from the residents you've been getting during the winter months and the extreme proximity of the turbine, only 640 feet to one home, it's obvious that you have to extend that summertime shutdown to a year-round one. Now, I know Mr. Wegnanny has said it many times, the people of this town voted for the wind turbine, and it's up to you to fulfill that. But the voters were uninformed and ill-advised at the time of the effects of that turbine. But now that the facts are known, the Selectmen have to take action and order a year-round shutdown. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Darty, for that input. It was duly noted. Are there any other Walk-ins, Zoom-ins that would like to address the board on a matter not on the agenda? I, oops, let me get a participants. Not seeing any hands raised, virtually or in live. So thank you for your comments. And we will go on to our report of the town administrator, Mr. Bedrow.
Good evening. A lot of different things on tonight, so I'll try to be as quickly as possible, knowing we have a hard stop. On the vaccine schedule, as of yesterday, residents over 55 are residents with one comorbidity are now eligible to sign up and get a vaccine. You can go to the state website, mass.gov/covid, and get a list of the comorbidities that are eligible based on the CDC guidelines. If you want to sign up for a vaccine, you can go to vaccinesignup.mass.gov. That will allow you to sign up for a vaccine to be administered at one of the mass vaccination sites. Those are the only sites that have pre-registration. You sign up, you'll be notified, you'll be able to go and get a vaccine. CVS, Mossfield Fairgrounds are still posting on an availability basis. When they get notified they're having vaccine, they post, so you can keep checking those. There was nothing to stop you from signing up on the mass vaccination site and then getting a vaccine someplace else. When you are notified that you get the vaccine appointment on the mass site, you just tell them you don't want it, and they'll find someone to fill it. So if you want to get a vaccine, sign up for Gillette or the Heitz Convention Center or one of the mass vaccination sites, and then work the other sites and see which one you get first. But there's nothing to prevent you from doing both, so I would urge you to do that. Housebound residents can contact the state on the state website on 844-771-1628 to work on getting their vaccine or go through the local Board of Health or Council on Aging. And we can help make those arrangements, but that will be through the state and through the state website, through their program. On a vaccine, vaccination count, oh, sorry, COVID count, we had 38 cases Monday to Monday. That is the same as the previous week. This week, we had multiple households with multiple COVID cases. So we had several households with three or four cases in them, which is normal. We do expect to see that. Like the state, we seem to be kind of stuck in this limbo, going up and down, but not spiking too much in either direction. For the last week, we were at 2.72, which is up from 2.32 the previous week. Statewide numbers was 2.24, up slightly from the 2.18 of the previous week. So we are still in that neighborhood. We do ask you to still be vigilant, and we know the weather's nice, people are getting out. You still need to wear masks. You still need to follow the guidance on gatherings and things like that. The state is getting a significant shipment, my understanding of the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine this week, about 100,000, so that's 100,000 people that'll get a shot and be fully vaccinated, because that's a one-dose shot, so that'll be a good thing. We are getting there. Please keep being careful, and we'll get through this. And hopefully, the numbers will start to come down. Bad news, good news for the board. You've been following on the news of the problems at the Registry of Motor Vehicles that are preventing people from getting their cars inspected. That is also impacting us. The Registry of Motor Vehicles has informed us that the delaying sending out the motor vehicle exercise commitment number two, and they will be combining it with commitment number three with a receipt date of May. This could potentially impact our free cash if we don't collect all these funds. It shortens the collection period. Commitment two usually comes in now. We collect it now. It is also our largest commitment of about $1,300,000, sorry. Secondly, depending upon what that is received, that determines what the due date is. So some of those payments may cross fiscal years and not come in this year and come in next year. So it is a little bit of a concern from a free cash and reserve policy perspective. However, the good news on that is we had projected 5.4 million and change of local receipts, of which motor vehicle exercise is one. We have already made that local receipt number for this year. So from a cash standpoint, from a budgetary revenue standpoint, we're in good shape. But if we do not collect a lot of that in this fiscal year, it will potentially impact our free cash in fiscal '22 in a bad way, but impact our free cash in fiscal '23 in a potentially good way. So I just want to bring that to your attention. Nancy brought it to me. And we'll keep, we'll keep an eye on that in the days and weeks ahead. One of the things the board has been talking about since I've been here is getting some extra help on some projects that we've been working on and things we've been talking about. So we're going to be instituting an internship program, unpaid internship program, for the summer for our office. I'll send you kind of the details that we're working on. We have several projects that we would have that person or people work on. One of the important ones would be upping the town's social media game, my social media game, so we can communicate better with residents through the social media. I know another project that we've been working on when Brad Washburn was here was kind of strating it out, the parking situation in Cole Parkway, where the only long-term overnight parking in Cole Parkway is in that one part of the Parkway that floods every time we get a very high tide. So those are just two projects. I know the Charter Committee is looking for someone to help them gather some information. So I'll send it out to the board. You can take a look at it. But I think we can get some couple of people in here for the summer to help us do some of these research projects and move some of these projects forward. So I'm looking forward to that. More happy news for you golfers, Widow's Walk is open. It has been crowded the last several days. Ian is doing a great job, so we are open. We met with him today about the issue on getting a food truck, or food trucks down there, because the restaurant and the clubhouse is closed due to the pending reservations. He's actually talked to at least one vendor who's very interested. So we'll be posting an RFP tomorrow or Thursday on the town website, as well as sending it out to interested vendors and see what we get back. Hopefully, we'll have someone in there by May 1st, a little bit afterwards, to start providing some food and beverages to the golfers. But Nancy, we are almost at our fiscal '21 number for the golf course already, I believe.
Yes, we're about $60,000 shy.
So, and that's as of April 6th, before the golf season even starts rolling. So we'll be in good shape there. So get out and play Widow's Walk. The course looks like it's in very, very good shape. Starting yesterday, the firefighters in Hammerock Station 4 have moved up to the Air Base Recreation Center. They will be staying up there with their vehicle while we start the work on the fire station, Hammerock. They will be demolishing that building on Friday. Scheduled permitting tomorrow and Thursday, the fire department will actually do some training on the empty building. They'll practice cutting holes in the roof and things like that before the building is demolished on Friday. We'll send a notice to Hammerock tomorrow, just so people are aware when the fire department's chopping up the building, that it's not on fire. We're actually just training. But it's a very good opportunity for the fire department. You don't really get a chance to do that type of live exercise. So we'll take advantage of that before the building is turned down, torn down, sorry. That project is scheduled to be done in October, and that will make that building modern. It will fit the trucks, and it'll get the living quarters up out of the flood zone. So if we have another storm like we had in March of 18, the living quarters won't get flooded. So we're looking forward to that. Peggy Beach Parking Lot is currently closed. We have some FEMA money. We'll be paving a portion of that parking lot. If you go down there, you can see where it's striked out and marked. So that'll start this week. It'll be completed by the end of the month. I know some people have said, why do you do it in April? Because we have to wait for the asphalt plants to actually open up for the spring to have sufficient asphalt to do the project. So we will pave a portion of the parking lot, and then the remainder of the parking lot will get regraded and have new material put down to make it nice and smooth and ready for the summer season. The Marina Project is going full tilt. You'll see it now. Most of the pilings are in. Next up is work on the gangway. We have a new gangway down there and a new entryway that we'll be putting in. I know some people were posting on social media about the ospreys that were trying to nest on one of the cranes down there. We were made aware of that. We did contact the state, the contractor was involved, and we discussed what steps they had to take. In a nutshell, they are allowed to remove the nest on the nesting material as long as there are no eggs or fledglings in the nest. So they are keeping close eye on that and keeping the ospreys out of that. If the ospreys lay their eggs, then those cranes cannot move until the fledglings are done and fly out of the nest. So we're keeping a close eye on that, but that project is on schedule. And we ask scheduled to be done and have the marina open by our May 15 deadline. Cedar Point continues. That is again on schedule to finish by the late spring. We still ask people to please don't walk in Cedar Point during the construction during the day. It's very congested. There's not a lot of room for the construction, for the cars. People live there, people walking, so please stay out of that area while we do the construction, or hopefully, we'll get that over with in a very short time. As we mentioned before, the senior center, the fencing is down. The landscaping is underway. You can really start seeing it take shape as to what it's going to look like. The staff is there, they're in, the veterans agent is there. If you do have an issue, you can go to the council and agent. We do ask that you call. We ask that you try to make an appointment. The reason for that is we don't want someone showing up and being told to have to wait outside because we're out of COVID capacity. But you do have the ability to go in. If you want to look at it, call and make an appointment with Linda, and she'll be happy to show you. We are planning a groundbreaking ribbon-cutting ceremony, probably end of the month, beginning of May. We've got to wait actually for the outdoor patio furniture to come in. That's being donated by the Friends of the Senior Center. When that gets in, we will have an opening ceremony following all the appropriate COVID guidelines. Lastly, water flushing this week. Hadley, Egypt Beach Road to Jericho, Beavie Dam, Tilden to Jericho, Turner Road, Tilden to Hadley, and First Parish from Common to Kent, as well as adjoining side streets and small cul-de-sacs that are off that. They'll be flushing very heavily this week and next week. After that, we'll be into the construction season and most likely be starting the water replacement project that the board has previously approved, and then getting into the project that we're going to do tonight. And that's what I have at this point.
Sorry, muted. I was using protocol for Zooms. Thank you very much, Mr. Bedrow. As everyone can tell, even though we're in the middle of pandemic, so much of the town business is going on. And I neglected to commend Jim when I mentioned the joint meeting. He gave a presentation of the budget and how it's prepared and presented. That's really neat and has slides. So if you want to watch just the first, I love slides. If you watch the first few minutes of that YouTube, you'll have a really good preparation for town meeting. So Jim neglected to say that, but thank you very much for that. And does the fire department training cut down on demo costs at all?
No, not at all. Just cut some holes in the roof and tear some things down, but.
All right. Well, I thought we might get lucky. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Bedrow? No? Great. Up, Ms. Curran.
I just have one. Jim, how are you going to advertise the intern program?
We'll post on the website, and we can send it out as a blast to people.
Okay.
And I'll dust off my social media and put it on my, my, my social media page.
So boom. With all those followers, we'll be sure, yeah, to have thousands of applicants.
Yeah, no.
Very good.
Any other questions, Mr. Bedrow? Saying none, yeah, I think this, the internship program, we get it out the door quickly, because, you know, college students who might be a little more adept at social media than some people in this room, this room, couldn't also, you know, obviously, get college credit when they need it for things like that. So thank you, Jim, for that initiative. All right, there are no further questions for Mr. Bedrow. We will go on to our first scheduled item, which I'm actually very excited about. We have Chief Mark Thompson here with retirement from the force. So I will turn it over to Mr. Thompson, or Chief Thompson.
Before, if I can, before Chief Thompson jumps in, when I did my WATD call this morning, they started off by saying, the first thing on the agenda is the retirement of the police chief. So Mark is not retiring. It's not his retirement. I just want to make sure everybody knows that. I would hope he would give me more notice than a morning news report that he's going to retire. So anybody out there heard WAT, the chief is, this is not a retirement, but Chief Thompson.
But it's an important member of the team, so Chief.
True story. Thank you. Yeah, it would have been an interesting way to break the news to the town administrator. So, so thank you very much. I appreciate it. We'll be brief. Sergeant McLaughlin is, is here as well. If you remember, several weeks back, or maybe a month ago or so, we were before you with the anticipation that our K9, who had been with us for more than a decade, was kind of, was getting ready to move off to greener pastures or the beach, is, I think, is kind of what the plan is. So K9 Tango has now officially moved off to retirement. We wanted to be able to, to come before you, to recognize that, recognize all the years of service that he's done with the town, and ask that, as a board, you release K9 Tango to his handler, Sergeant McLaughlin, so that he can go off under the care and custody of Sergeant McLaughlin and live out his golden years, you know, on the beach and with some relaxation. So that is the first part of our news, and it's, you know, it's exciting. It's bittersweet, as we talked about before. But it is, it's a big transition, and it's an exciting part for the, for the program. And with that, because of the incredibly generous donation from the Marley Foundation, we are able to kind of continue the program forward. And we're at a point now that we are evaluating the newest K9, K9 Breck, who would be the replacement for Tango. So he's in an evaluation stage at this point. And we are hoping that in the very near future, we'll be able to make some formal introductions and say that our program is moving forward with him. So it's a lot of exciting stuff. Like I said, it's bittersweet for, for K9 Tango. But our hope is that the board will recognize his service as well. And, and we can release him for, for his retirement.
Thank you, Chief. Before I open it up to Sergeant McLaughlin, I'm sure he'll want to say something, but would you mind just giving a quick overview of how important Tango has been to the department and the kinds of things that he has assisted our officers with?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it's important to, to kind of recognize the 24/7 nature of this role and what the K9 really does. And it was just a few weeks ago that we had an incident of it was a lost child. And I think sometimes when we think of the K9 capacity within the police department, where, you know, it's out chasing the suspect, the bad guy, something has happened. And that's incredibly true. When someone breaks into a house or something happens, you really want that resource there very quickly to aid officers to be able to start a track to find out where that person has gone. But when you have something as important as a child being missing or an elderly person who has wandered off, having that ability to immediately in real time have that asset of the dog to be able to start, start a track and look for that missing person, it's huge. So while Tango is trained in tracking, you know, suspects, in, trained in narcotics detection, all those things are incredibly important, and they really make up that law enforcement piece. But there's the community service aspect of it that I think over the years, you know, I, I know when you respond to something where, where a child is missing, you want to do everything that you can to very quickly locate, you know, that child or that person. So those are the types of things I think that we look at with the K9. And I think Tango, over the years, has really done that. And Sergeant McLaughlin, I know we actually have talked about this in the past, but he's now really the true expert, I think, in this region with this. And, and, yeah, he won't want me to say any of that, but he's done so much work over the years, starting with Felix and now with Tango. And the amount of training that goes into this and the work that he does regionally, he's truly, really respected with all the handlers around. So to have that knowledge, and I think it's, you know, even on my own, my own standpoint, we miss all the critical incidents that have happened, not necessarily in Situate, but outside, within the, you know, within the area, within our mutual aid communities that he's been involved with, and all of that experience on those incidents comes back. So that's so incredibly important in our community when something happens, that we have a resource like that, that we can call upon. And, you know, the 24/7 nature of it, it's, it's a big thing to be able to. Like, he may be home watching Jeopardy, but if something happens, you know, Tango's coming out. So we're really fortunate with that.
Thank you. Would, would the sergeant like to add some comments before?
Absolutely. I'm going to kind of switch places here and let him take.
I was like, where is he? I don't.
I think over here. Big chair right now, Chief. How you doing, everyone?
Hi, thank you for joining us.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, it was, it's been very exciting with Tango over the years, and he's made it easy for me, and it's been an honor and a privilege to work with him.
Well, we really appreciate the work that you've done to train him and to reoffer him retirement accommodations.
Yes. Much. Yeah, he's, in the past couple of days, he's been so used to all these years going to work. And when we get ready, the certain, the routine that we go through, and he's, he's been kind of looking at me going, hey, whoa, how can I go? But he's, he's gonna, he's gonna enjoy it. He's, he's done a great job. Very beneficial here in town to have as an asset, so thank you.
Well, hopefully, the town, the town will be sending over a thank you basket to Tango, too. I'd like to open it up to the board. We do have a hearing momentarily, but I know that this is an important day. So would the board like to add any comments? Everyone's being polite. Mr. Vignani.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just add what everyone wants to say, you know. It's, and Chief Thomas mentioned it best. It's the situations that occur that the dog participates in that people aren't aware. It's the elderly person with dementia that wanders up in the woods. It's a child that gets lost at the playground that, it's just, years ago, I remember when we've, we've gotten quite a few on my watch here, and they've always just served the community so well. So thank you for training them so well and maintaining them. And, you know, we're lucky to have that as part of our force. I know other communities have used our dogs in the past, too.
Great. Mara, did you want to add?
Thank you.
I, I was just going to say the same thing, and thank you for dedicating all your time to him. You know, it takes a lot of work, and I'm sure he's going to have a great, a great retirement life with you and your family, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah, he will. My daughters have grown up with the K9s, you know, since they're very young. And it's interesting to watch.
And it's, it's interesting to watch them and the dog grow up over the years and the bond that they've created as well as myself and Tango. So I, my youngest, I said, you can be busy with Tango now and she's all excited about it. So I'm sure she'll be feeding him all the food that he wasn't allowed to eat over the years. That's okay now. It's all good.
That's great. Thank you for everything.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you. I believe we need to make a motion on this matter. Would someone care to do so? If someone can find it. Move that we release Tango to retirement with our thanks and appreciation. To, is it?
To Sergeant McLaughlin.
Yeah, to Sergeant, I'm sorry, to Sergeant McLaughlin. Motion made by Ms. Conley, seconded by Ms. Curran. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Saying none, this requires a roll call vote.
Sorry, how'd you unmute? Ms. Canfield?
Absolutely.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Smooth sales to you and your family and especially to Tango.
Thank you all. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
We move on to our seven o'clock public hearing discussion and vote. I appreciate you allowing us the two minutes to send off our, our friend to retirement. And this is for, sorry, I've got to move with my screen. This is for the transfer of liquor license from, sorry, 711 M A to Holy Cross Investments doing business as 711 Attorney Thomas, I'm sorry, Truax. I hopefully said that right. And hi, and the owner, Baha McGegly. Did I say that even close? Thank you. All right, so I will let you guys give the presentation. But essentially our 711 in North Situate is, the franchise is being sold to Mr. McGegly. And our job is to review the application of the liquor license transfer. Who would like to start?
Madam Chair, Attorney Tom Truax of Salem, on behalf of the, and members of the board, on behalf of the, I'm here appearing on behalf the new applicant with Holy Cross Investments, Inc. McGegly is the sole owner, sole officer, director, shareholder of the corporate. He's also proposed license manager. What you have before you is a request for transfer package store license from, from 711 to Holy Cross Investments. The underlying transaction is a franchise agreement. So Mr. McGegly is entering into a franchise agreement with 711. So he will be a franchisee, a 711 franchisee at the conclusion of the transaction. As for experience, Mr. McGegly has been a longtime 711 franchisee over 20 years. He's been at other locations. His current location, which he's had in Walpole for the past 20 years since 2000, is a package store wine and beer and wine license, same, same setup. His brother is the license manager there, but he is the owner of the store. So this will be nothing new for him and he'll come to you with 20, 20 years of experience in the package store business. In addition, I'm told there's a licensed card reader at the store, which will scan driver's licenses. So I think between the experience and the card right, card reader, I think you'll have a smooth transition. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Attorney Truax. I do have a couple of questions, but I'd like to open up the board before I launch to see if they have questions. Anyone want to start? My little squares. Sorry, Mr. Vignani?
Sure. You know, congratulations and welcome to town. I do just want to bring up the fact that not in this last owner, but previous, we have had issues with the liquor laws in that, in that location. So we just want to emphasize that this meeting, how important that is, that everybody gets scanned. I assume your tip certified or whoever's going to be working, the register there is, I guess that's more of a question than an assumption. And then just know that that's an area where there's a lot of kids that hang out and we want to make sure that alcohol is only served for those that it's supposed to be.
Are you, yes, Mr. McGegly?
I can, I can actually maybe address his concerns and stuff. And I, I totally agree with you these days, you know, we live in an age that everybody wants to get their hands on, you know, common age item, whether it's tobacco or alcohol. So fortunately, our company invests a lot of money into, you know, state of the art scanning systems. And even undercover shoppers, there's more than one program that we anticipate, especially in the past three years to, you know, to avoid situation like this. But I can proudly say that in my past 21 years, we never had one incident, whether in tobacco or liquor. So I go into this into a lot, with a lot of confidence. You come to me, I'm gonna get you. I'm gonna get one of those K lines.
Other questions from the board?
No, he answered mine about violations, being in the business for 20 years. So thank you very much. It's really important for us to know as well and welcome to Situate.
Thank you.
I, I absolutely, first thing we should have said was welcome. It's exciting that you're coming. That is a very popular location. One question I had for you was, so you will, you'll maintain your other, you have one other franchise? Or I wasn't clear on the backup, whether that was one or?
I have two stores, only one was a beer and wine, which is the one in Walpole. We also own another store in Quincy.
Okay, so not new to the business. So the other question is, you're listed as the manager that will be on site for 40 hours a week. Is that how you're intending to operate this store for now?
Yeah, that's actually usually my structure, especially when I get into a new franchise, just beer and wine. But I, you know, I don't, I don't let anybody run the store except me for a long time to like feel comfortable that I can bring a manager in. Like I have mentioned, both of my other stores that have been with me for 15 years or more. So yeah, I can, I can say with confidence again that, you know, it's going to be my baby for a while.
Great. Well, as Mr. Vignani said, that, you know, we wish you all a lot in the world. And that this community in particular, I'm sure others do, but this particular community takes, takes our responsibilities for protecting our kids very seriously. So.
No, definitely.
Meeting, when will the transfer take place?
Well, after this hearing and this hearing goes well and we get our approval, we, we submit it to our franchising department. And the franchising department usually set a date. It's usually maybe three to four weeks, but my understanding there is another, maybe a hearing or something like this with the E B C C or some sort of process we set up with the E B C C. So I'm not, I'm not so quite sure about the transition time, but I want it to be more than six weeks. And maybe, maybe Tom can elaborate, can fill me more on this or fill you guys more, because I'm not sure about the timeline.
He's talking about six weeks, four to six weeks.
Well, after we conclude this hearing, if it goes in your favor, please let us know so we can welcome you to town properly. Does the board have additional questions or comments? No, there might be balloons and parades involved. I don't know. This is a public hearing, so I will open it up to our participants. If you would like to discuss or comment upon the transfer of liquor license at the 711, please either use the reactions to raise hand or simply put on your video and physically raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you. I'm scrolling through my list. I see no public comments. Neighbors, obviously, were duly notified. If there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve a transfer of liquor license from 711 of Massachusetts Incorporated to Holy Cross Investments Incorporated, doing business as 711 for the premises located at 337 Gannett Road in Situate, Massachusetts.
Move then Ms. Curran, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Goodrich. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, this matter requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Welcome to Situate. We look forward to meeting you in person. Because we all go there.
You're gonna see a lot, me and my wife and my daughter, so.
And there's one more motion. Lorraine points out, there is a second motion. I apologize.
Is there? Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, would you like me to entertain? Okay, move that the Board of Selectmen approve a common vicular's license for Holy Cross Investments Incorporated, doing business as 711 for the premises located at 337 Gannett Road in Situate, Massachusetts.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Is there any further discussion? Saying none, this matter also requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Now, welcome to Situate.
Again.
And just so you're aware, so the hours will be the same as the existing store.
Yes, yes. The only thing is going to change that you guys are going to get a very nice fist lift for that store. So surprise.
Great, great. All right, we're looking forward to it. Thank you so much for coming in.
Same here, same here. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I gotta go cook some hot dogs.
And slay me.
All right, take care.
Great.
Bye.
We are actually three minutes ahead of schedule for our public hearing on the next matter. So, um, is there anything the board would, we're gonna, we're gonna tread water here for a second because we really technically can't start.
Is Kara on the call? I don't see her.
Hi, I'm sorry. I've got two screens going here.
I think she was at one point.
All right, well, I need her.
She had an overlapping commitment tonight.
All right, um, is, are there any, as we wait, just so everyone who's participating understands that because it's a posted public hearing, we can't, we're supposed to start on time and we can't start early because that is not the rule. So I'm talking slowly. We have two minutes. Are there any announcements that the board would like to jump from the end of the meeting to the beginning? And perhaps a liaison report? Or anything that, I will note that I will remind everyone, we have town meeting on Monday. And on April 25th, there will be the Easter Rising Ceremony next to the bandstand at 12:00 P. M., which has become an annual event. And it's really interesting. It's hosted by our sister city, West Cork Sister City Committee. And really sort of educated all of us about our, our connection with our sister city. So, and our Irish heritage. So that's coming up. Anyone else? We got one more minute. All right, do we have Kara on here? As we can tee this up, the public hearing is regarding alterations to premise to expand, sorry, next door. So Salt Society is going to get bigger and to expand their liquor license as well. If approved. They will get bigger. All right, I don't see Kara.
I don't see her name unless she's got a different.
So I will invite Kara, if you're on, on a phone or an ID that is not say your name, can you take your video off or some other way, let us know that you're here? It's like a seance. All right, Jim, what do we do if our public hearing applicant is not available at the time of the public hearing?
If you don't want to require that they readvertise you, continue the hearing to a date and time certain.
Can it be later this evening or can, do we have to do it another day?
Can't we still hear? Can't we still review?
We have questions, but nobody to answer our questions.
Mike. James, can we defer it to later in the agenda? Does it have to be the posted time? I suspect a posted time.
I mean, I, you've opened the hearing at the public, at the required time, which is what you have to do. You can't continue it again to a date and time certain. I've never seen it continued to a later in the evening, but if you can continue to a later date, I don't know why you couldn't continue to a later time this evening.
All right, so it is now 7:15. Is it supposed to time for the public hearing? The discussion of the alteration of premises to Salt Society. I would suggest to the board that we have officially opened this hearing and that I would entertain a motion to postpone the discussion until 9:50, which is an open slot. No?
I would move to continue the public hearing until.
We don't need.
That's all, just not postpone, but continue the public hearing at nine o'clock. All right, whatever time.
Michelle, I just, Michelle just called her. She's on a Zoom call with school and she said she'll have to reschedule.
Reschedule tonight or later?
Sounds like a different date.
Okay, so Lorraine, when's our next Selectmen's meeting?
Not for three weeks.
April 27.
That, that'll be your next one, April 27th at a time certain.
Okay. All right, Lorraine, if you wouldn't mind coordinating with her to find a time that we can make sure that that happens. That would be great. She'll have to readvertise, obviously.
Why, why don't we give her the opportunity to log on in an hour or something first?
Okay, I would propose to move her to 9:50 because we do have that open slot.
9:50?
I'm sorry. No, we don't do that anymore, Tommy. 7:50. Because the nitrogen loading has been removed from our agenda. There's an open slot.
Okay, hold on. Texter.
Sorry, Lorraine?
He's texting.
Let me text her.
Okay. All right, while we wait, we need, definitely see Mr. Moon is here for our next discussion. Okay. We will pause. Was a glorious day. That was good.
I think we can keep going and if, if she comes on, great. If not, we'll make another motion.
But I think we have to technically make a motion.
You have to do something.
So I would entertain a motion.
End the public hearing, Tony, either move it or end it or postpone it.
Can we, can we open endedly say, say, you know, move to continue the motion till later in the meeting? Is that acceptable?
She's typing right now. She can make 7:50.
So I would just, motion to continue the public hearing at 7:50. That's it.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Continue, Mr. Vignani, seconded by Ms. Conley. Is there further discussion? Saying none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great. Motion carries five zero. We will postpone this conversation, continue this public hearing at 7:50, which means we can now move on to our 7:25, because it's not a public hearing, to a discussion vote of surplus votes for auction with our harbor master, who has just popped up, Mr. Moon. How are you?
Good. How are you this evening?
Well, so this is sort of the final chapter of the long discussion of replacing boats with the promise of selling the ones we don't need anymore, correct?
Correct, yes.
All right, why don't you tee us, tee us up on this?
So we have the 2025 foot Parker that needs to be repowered. And the new unit three, the Calvin Beal that was built up man, that has been delivered, is now at Boat Works and will be going into service in next, I believe, week or two. They'll continue to work on the fire pump to get that operational. So it is my, my desire to dispose of one way or another, the old unit three, whether, you know, to another department or to public auction. And then the second boat is the old pump out boat, which we kept around as kind of a, a second workboat while the piling project was going on. That was replaced with a new pump out boat that we got through a grant that, again, I'd like to dispose of. It has, it has no useful purpose to the harbor master department anymore.
Great. Are there any questions from the board about these two proposals? No, I think we're all happy to put, my only question, and it's probably for Nancy, is the proceeds from these auctions, where do they land?
They would land with the Water Enterprise Fund.
So they stay, so, so Steve, it stays in your bucket?
It goes into the enterprise funds, not, not into my budget this year, no.
All right, excellent. Okay, um, any further discussion about this matter? Mr. Goodrich?
So do you have to go to public auction or you can't do like a broker, I don't know, a boat finder, but?
I believe it has to go to auction and we actually did very well with the auction with Boston Whalers last year. And with boats, the way they are, being pretty sought after, I think. I think we'll do pretty well, but it's kind of strike while the iron is hot.
Wait, any other further questions?
Nancy may, Nancy may be able to answer the question about does they have to go to auction or not? Better than that, you know?
Yeah, it should go to auction and we, as Stephen said, we did very well with them, the relationship we have with Auctions International with the excess, the surplus materials we auctioned last year.
Great. Ms. Curran?
I was just gonna ask, once we, if this is approved, which I'm sure it will be, uh, when will it be posted? This week? To go to auction?
We need to reach out to the auction firm to see if they, um, they're gonna send somebody out to take all the specs on it and put it up on their site or if they want us to do it.
Oh, okay.
So, within a week, I would say.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there a motion from the board if there's no further discussion?
Sure. Move to approve a surplus auction to dispose of the two obsolete Harbor Master boats as listed.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Conley. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this matter requires a roll call vote.
And trailers.
Oh, and trailers?
And the trailers, yeah.
All right, we're sweetening the pot. All right, we have a motion in a second. Uh, no further discussion. We will take a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero. Go forth and sell.
Thank you. Have a great evening. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Harbor Master. Um, great, that moves us to 7:30, motion, uh, vote and, sorry, discuss and vote. The Clean Water Trust Loans, Change of Jointer, which I did Google today, for Seawall Repair Program, Pam Avitali, who is our treasure collector, Pam. I'm feeling, I'm feeling a little informed because I did have to go and look this up today, but you can unmute. You're still muted. But wait, you're still muted, Pam. Hold on.
Hey, you know where to go, in the bottom left-hand corner, the unmute button, bottom left-hand corner of the resume screen.
She's working on it. I did. Thank you for saving me because if I tried to attempt to describe it, I'd mess it up, so. If you could outline the, uh, the process of, of, uh, of, of the requested vote.
Really, it's just a, a paper trail moving, uh, the payer to a different person and getting on a different debt schedule. So the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust is assuming the role of servicer to the town's loans with the dam and seawall repair programs executed by the town in the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. So we have two loans currently with the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. That's who we're paying now for the seawell programs. We have one loan for $3.5 million and another loan for $500,000. What is happening now is instead of the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs being paid for the loans, uh, the Mass Clean Water Trust is going to be the servicer for those two loans. Um, it's really just a paper change and instead of paying the two loans, we pay both loans twice a year at odd times. Uh, both loans are gonna be paid twice a year at the same time period. So July, January and July, instead of, one was, one used to be, um, January and April and the other one was July and October. So I think they're just trying to make it easier. It was, uh, a rigorous pro- problem I've had with the Executive Office. Uh, they never send the invoice. The payments never seem to get applied correctly. And I've worked with the Clean Water Trust a lot since I've been in Situate and they are on track. And I think that this is a good move for the state and the town.
Great, thank you. So the terms of the loans don't alter at all? It's just the servicer?
Just the payment dates and the servicer.
Okay, great. Um, are there any questions from the board? Did anyone else Google jointer? Okay.
I'm curious, Pam, did you initiate this or did EEOE initiate it?
I didn't. I must say that there's been a lot of complaints to the Executive Office. Um, and I was one that would complain every time there was a payment due. So I think that, um, they got a little bit behind the schedule and Mass Clean Water Trust just took them over.
Okay, that's great.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a good move.
Yeah, sounds like a good.
Are there any other questions for, I'm sorry, Pam?
Oh, sorry. I just want to let you know that I definitely have paperwork that needs to be signed as soon as possible by the board. Um, there's also some other paperwork. Uh, as you know, um, this wasn't discussed and it didn't have to be discussed tonight at the meeting, but I just wanna put in my two cents, uh, that we are expanding the septic loan program. So there's just some more paperwork that you all need to sign for that too, please.
Great, thank you, Pam.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board about the matter before us on transferring the, um, servicer? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Move that the jointers and related updated debt services schedule presented to this meeting be approved and the jointers be signed by the select board.
Moved by Ms. Conley. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Vignani. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, the motion carries five zero. Thank you, Pam. That will hopefully help your department sort things out a little bit better.
Thank you.
Great.
Have a nice night.
Thanks, Pam. You too.
All right, we will move on to our 7:40, which is a discussion vote of the Water Main Replacement Contract, Phase 4B, uh, with Kevin Cafferty, our DPW Director, who's there on his John Deere down there. Hello, Mr. Cafferty.
Hello, it's a caterpillar behind me, but that's okay.
Oh, sorry, I don't have my glasses on. It's just not yellow. See, our DPW Director knows his stuff. Look at this 4B, so we've been doing this a while.
We have been doing it a while. Um, we've been seeing good results with the flushing. We've been having really good results with the flushing. During the flushing program and while we were doing the ice pigging, we discovered some issues. Um, we discovered some issues when we were ice pigging Old Oak and Bucket. You know, we could tell by doing the ice pigging that the pipe was in very poor shape. It's an old transite pipe that's disintegrating before our eyes. It did break about a year and a half ago. Um, we're gonna replace this section of pipe. Uh, we've also had issues on Brook Street, so we're gonna replace from Front Street up Brook Street down to Tilden where Rachel's Way is because we've had some crazy things going on there where people have had brown water and we haven't been able to figure it out. So, um, we know the pipe is in very bad shape and that's one of the areas we're going after. So Old Oak and Bucket Road, which is a key section, um, of the water line because that transmits it from the plant to the water towers. It's about 7,700 feet. We've got Brook Street, which is 2,300 feet and we also have about 1,100 feet on Tilden Road. We went out to bid. We had very competitive bids. The low bidder that came in is the same contractor who is doing the work in the first 4A. So that's pretty good. We'll be dealing with one contractor. Um, they're a local company out of Pembroke, uh, seems like a family-run organization. They've been in business about 75, 80 years and have a good, good reputation from what we've heard and the information we've looked up.
Okay, great. Um, so Kevin, all of the cast iron has been replaced in town or are there other sections?
Most of the cast iron is replaced. There might be some out there that we're not aware of, but we believe we've replaced most of it. Um, and on this section here, we're going after, um, some old punky transite line.
Okay, and it remind me, uh, this contract basically is the full nut of our, our, um, budget for pipe replacement for the.
We're spending every dime we have, so, yep, we are, we're doing it for the, um, we're putting it all towards a water pipe, obviously.
Okay. Uh, does the board have any additional questions for our DPW Director? Mr. Vignani?
Just Kevin, where's this, where's the funding for this coming from?
Um, it was money that was allocated last year for water line replacement.
So it's just part of the big pool of, of money that we allotted for this and this is, is it, did it bump some of the project or is this what you intended to do?
No, this is where we were looking at, um, some of the areas that we were looking at. Um, they're just areas that we know are going to be failing soon.
Okay.
So what we do typically is we look with our engineers and also Sean Anderson does an evaluation, as well as Sean McCarthy, myself, we talk about the different pipes. We look at the age, we look at the material and make the decision on, on what needs to be replaced and how it has to go. And we also base it off complaints and concerns in those areas.
Right, thanks.
Right, I think Tony, your point that there's basically a $2 million plug line that, and then they go through that process. Uh, Mr. Goodrich, did you have your hand up next?
Yes, um, so Kevin, this is, this is great news and I, and I think, am I right to think that, I mean, this is perfectly in line with all the different phases from the tie-in bond study, which I know we have to explore more, but I mean, this might even get us slightly ahead, I don't want to say. But this is exactly what we planned out and what's been recommended as well. I mean, it's tries to, there's, there's some good news about this, that, um, phase four, we're supposed to be for 2022. And having those areas puts us exactly, um, right where we need to be. So we're staying on schedule.
And we're following pretty close to our, to our plan on what we've been planning all along, the, the tactical approach to replacing these lines. These are transite lines, so we have, we believe we have most of the cast iron out. There is not a large cast iron main that I'm aware of that I'm afraid is gonna break, or Sean Anderson is. Um, and this is kind of our worst section of transite that, that we know we have. As well as a section on Utility Road that we're replacing with the previous contract that's broken about seven times in the past two years.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure folks at home are clear that this is part of the larger plan and it's, and this is methodically thought out and this, it's great. That's awesome news. So thank you for getting that great quote and this is excellent.
Other questions from the board? Seeing no other questions, would someone like to make a motion?
Move that the select board award the contract for Phase 4B of the Water Main Rehabilitation Project to Selco. Is it Selco or Celcio?
It's Selco.
Yeah, it's Selco.
But if I can, I, I'm not sure if the number you have is exactly correct because we found a $60 error in the bid. The actual number is 1-9-6-1-3-27.60. That's 1-9-6-1-3-27.60.
That's what we have.
Okay, great.
Perfect, yep. Okay, sorry. Move that the board, that the select board award the contract for Phase 4B of the Water Main Rehabilitation Project to Selco Construction Corporation of Pembroke, Mass for $1,961,327.60.
Moved by Ms. Curran. Is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Kevin. When's the construction on that starting?
Thank you very much. Um, we will be starting, um, the first thing I'll ask you is hopefully we can get the contract signed, fairly quickly, so I can get it over to the contractor. Um, I'm probably looking around April 15th for them to start up. And one of the areas where I'd like to start is Brook Street. The reason I want to do Brook Street now is because I want to get off Front Street before we start getting busier and crowded, more crowded and, um, get that area done. And this project also does include, um, we'll mill the roads a year later and then we'll do a complete overlay. So they'll look like brand new roads when it's all done.
Okay, and it'll be the patches in between when it settles?
The patch will be in between as it settles for about a year.
Okay. Great, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
All right, we had postponed the public hearing to 7:50 because we are not discussing nitrogen. Um, and I've been informed that, um, the applicant would like to postpone to a further meeting. So if I could have a motion to postpone the public hearing to a future meeting, um, I don't think we have to specify the date, do we? We do?
She did not specify the date.
Okay, so specify that we will.
She's, she's willing to pay to re-advertise the public hearing.
And then you just close the public hearing and we do it.
Sorry, say that again?
So if, if she's willing to pay for a, another advertisement, then you just close this public hearing and you have a brand new public hearing later.
Okay, so then doesn't matter what the date is, she'll, we'll figure that out?
Figure it out with her, yep.
Okay, so just close the public, I'd like a motion to close the public.
Move, move to close the public hearing on Salt Society to a further date to be determined.
Moved by Ms. Conley, seconded by Mr. Goodrich. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five zero and I'm delighted that our very punctual, um, um, Pause for Cause applicants are here. They're not scheduled to eight and it is 7:37, so this is fabulous. So I see Lisa Huffman and I see, I, I'm sorry, just says Animal Shelter, so I don't know your name. Um, we do have a special event application for Pause for Cause and Lisa Huffman is the president of the Friends of Situate Dog Park. Um, I must say, we didn't get a ton of backup information on this. It kind of came in dribbling. So, um, Ms. Huffman, if you would like to just tell the board briefly what the, the, what the proposed application or what this proposed special event is, that would be helpful.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, and joining me from the Animal Shelter is Mary Ann Regan. She is, um, runs the Animal Shelter. So she's here too. Um, we are finally, after, you know, a long time of them being around and us being around for the last four years, we're finally collaborating on a joint fundraiser that we'd like to do. Um, it's called Pause for Cause, as you mentioned, and we'd like to hold it on Saturday, January 5th, I'm sorry, June 5th. If it rains that day, we would ask to have a rain date for June 6th, the Sunday following. Uh, and basically what it's going to be is an event from 10:00 AM until 1:00 PM, where, um, from 10:00 to 11:30, we are going to encourage people with big dogs to come. And from 11:30 to 1:00, we're going to encourage people with small dogs to come. The fundraising effort primarily for Friends of Situate Dog Park is we want to get a small dog park built. There has been such, um, a demand for it. People who donated back in 2016, when we were initially going to build two parks at one time, you know, are, are really chomping at the bit, wanting to have a separate area for their small dogs. So from our, for our fundraising effort, it's really to encourage people with small dogs to come to the park and raise funds that will go towards that small dog park. Um, and then for the Animal Shelter, they are going to be raising funds for their organization as well as collecting, um, pet food for the shelter. And, um, so it's, it's an event where we can educate people about our two organizations, uh, as well as fundraise. Um, we're actually, uh, Mary Ann has set up, uh, registration page, so we'll kind of have a, an idea beforehand of how many people are going to come. We want people to sign up if they're coming for the small dog, um, hour and a half from 11:30 to 1:00 or if they'll be coming for the large dog, um, portion from 10:00 to 11:30. Uh, so we'll have an idea and, you know, I think it'll be a successful event if we get 100 people to come through during that three-hour period. Um, you know, this is meant to be kind of a transient event. We don't expect people to be coming and hanging out for hours at a time. Uh, but that said, you know, we only have 22 spots at the dog park. So, um, much like when we held our grand opening there in September of 2019, um, we think it would be beneficial to have a police detail to help direct traffic in and out. It is kind of a tight parking lot. It is kind of a tight parking lot, so getting out, um, would be, uh, could be tricky if all the spots are full. So it would be helpful to have a police detail there. And then I know I had mentioned on this event site plan about overflow parking, perhaps going to Widow's Walk or the, the boat launch, and I know that, um, that everyone would prefer that that's not where we direct overflow parking. So, um, in our materials, when we publicize this event, we will encourage people to park at the Green Bush commuter lot. Um, and then walk from there. But again, because this is meant to be a transient event, uh, you know, I'm hoping that there's not going to be a ton of overflow uh, and that we can work with the spots that we have. But, um, but we will offer the, the Green Bush or suggest the Green Bush commuter lot as an option for overflow parking if people can't get a spot at the dog park.
Great. Thank you, Lisa, for that overview. Um, we did get, um, in addition to our normal backup package, there was some follow-up material. Um, and in it, there were some, uh, first thing I was concerned about was CDC guidelines and our Board of Health had no problem with this event. So we'll take that off the table as far as, you know, people that we needed to. But there was concern from DPW and the police department about traffic parking, all of that. So, uh, would, I, I apologize, but I don't have a full backup on the police detail. Is that something you guys are prepared to, to fund? How are you?
Yeah. Yeah, we discussed as a group, we're going to be paying for that. Yes.
Okay. Does the board have additional questions about this event? Ms. Karen. Big Dog Karen.
Dog owner Karen. Two, two, two thoughts. Um, one, what is the event? I really don't have a clear picture as to what you're doing. Two fundraises, other than you're looking for funds, so I'd love to hear what you're doing. And then two, do we have preliminary plans for the small dog park? Do we just not construct it due to funding at the beginning of the project? I was curious as to where the plans were for that, Lisa.
Yeah, so when we initially wanted to build a dog park, we were going to build a large dog park and a small dog park. So the initial plans included both of those, um, parks. But because of funding, we had to phase it. So phase one became the park that exists currently and phase two became the small dog park. Um, based on the, um, bids that went out initially for the two parks to be built, uh, the town would like us to have $100,000 in our funding before we would put out to bid to build the small dog park. Um, I have talked to Sean McCarthy. Uh, and I know he's, he's looked at the plans and the blueprints and tried to figure out if there's a way that maybe we could condense the size of the small dog park as it was planned out originally. It was going to be a half acre. You know, what if, what if we reduce that to a quarter acre? That's still a good sized park for smaller dogs. And how much will that reduce, uh, our cost? And perhaps we could put it out to bid sooner than later.
And it's on the same site, right?
Yes, yes. That, that, the, the entry gates and the water hookup are already there for the small dog park. That was, was put in during phase one. Uh, so really it would just be clearing the land behind that back fence. And then, you know, leveling it, if it needed to be leveled, put up fencing and, and put the mulch down. Because like I, the water hookup is already there. Uh, we've already purchased a water fountain for that dog park, um, and the entry gates are there, so.
So, and what are you doing? What is the fundraising event? Is it just come by and donate money? Is it?
Um, so with the registration, people who pre-register for the event, um, will pay a fee and that fee gets them, um, a swag bag. So we are looking for sponsors for this event. We will go out, once it's approved tonight. We'll be going out to get sponsors for the event. We already have one of our board members, um, Friends of Situate Dog Park. Donna Culbert from Donna's Do Right Dogs has already volunteered to be one of the sponsors. So there will be swag bags with fun items that are donated from our different sponsors. We're trying to get, um, Reese's Homemade Dog Biscuits, local Maura Divine and her son Reese, who, um, they're at lots of the farmers markets. We're hoping that they'll be able to come and, uh, sell their dog treats there and maybe do some giveaways as well or have something, um, included in our swag bag. Uh, so it's really going to be to educate people, um, about both of our organizations. There are still a lot of people in town who think that the dog park is funded by the town. And don't realize that we're a nonprofit and, you know, we're responsible for raising the funds to get the small park built. So, um, so we want to encourage people to, um, to make donations, knowing that, you know, we are a nonprofit, trying to raise the funds to, you know, to add this to, um, to the community.
I was just going to add to that, Lisa. Thank you. That, um, yeah, it's the same issue for the Situate Animal Shelter. Many people think that we are funded fully by the town. So this is like Lisa said, an educational opportunity. And what I think we've come to realize throughout the years is that people absolutely love getting together with their dogs. They want to bring their dogs to places, um, whether that's a brewery or a dog park like this, they love it. And it gives them the opportunity to just gather with their dogs safely, socially distanced. But also raise funds for two good causes in a collaborative effort.
Sounds great. Thank you both. Ms. Conley?
Uh, getting back to the adding to the dog park, my question is, um, will there be additional parking added? Or it's simply, uh, uh, because it's, it's oftentimes I go by there and there's no parking.
Yeah.
So I, I guess my question is building yet another park will probably add to the parking pressure down there.
Uh, you are correct, it will. Um, the initial plans for the two parks included the parking lot as it exists right now. Um, you know, I, I'm thrilled that it is such a popular place for people to go. And, um, within the board, we have discussed, are there ways to add additional parking somehow? We can't really extend the lot that's there because of drainage issues and wetlands. You know, we're kind of maxed out with the space we had available that didn't encroach on wetlands and, and followed all the zoning guidelines. So, um, you know, I, I'm not sure. I think we, if we were going to add additional parking, I think we would have to go back to the architectural firm and have them relook at, at the plan and figure out a way to somehow add some additional spaces.
Well, to follow up on that, I, I guess what I'm thinking is that, you know, it, it may be a little bit difficult to do it. But if it would be possible to have different hours for different sizes of dogs, so that you're using the same park and the same parking lot, but you're saying, you know, Wednesdays, Thursdays in the morning are for little dogs. You know what I'm saying? I, and I, I think there would be a way of having small dog hours because I assume the big dogs don't care if there are small dogs in the park. But the small dogs care if there are big dogs in the park, um, so, or their owners care. So I guess I'm thinking that one way to make the, the park more accessible to the people with the small dogs would be just to designate some different hours for them.
Yeah, so that has been proposed, um, by, you know, some people who use the park and, and also by some of our other board members. And I think, um, while no one was opposed to doing it, it's just really an enforcement issue, you know? How, how do we stop people with big dogs or with little dogs, vice versa, depending on the time? How do we stop them from going? We, we can't guarantee that if you go during the small dog hours, there's not going to be a big dog there. We can certainly encourage those times.
Well, if we can train dogs, maybe we can train people to follow rules. Isn't that the story here? You train the person, not the dog?
Yeah.
That's right.
I think, I think their board is, you guys, I mean, you managed to, to thread the needle to get the first part, part, um, built. So I have full confidence that you all address these. My question on the same notion is I don't believe, I mean, you've got, you had, you went through the planning process for the two sites anyway. So those were, those are already on the books approved. So any changes you might have to come back and get, you know, blessed? Yeah, okay.
I realized that.
Yeah, I am. So, so to the board's point is, um, that it was fully vetted through the original process. Who knew you were going to be so successful? You did, but yeah. So everyone should just get on their bikes and come and have the dogs run side.
Right.
Go on a skateboard.
There you go. Um, are there other questions for, for the applicants on this matter from the board? All right, um, I don't see, I, let me just make sure, sorry, I've got split screens going here on. Um, are there any members of the public that have anything they'd like to add to this matter? Because it is a very popular spot. I don't see any. So would the, anyone on the board care to make a motion?
Motion to approve the pause for a cause special event pending parking plans approved by the Situate Police Department.
Move by Mr. Goodrich, is there a second? Second by Big Dog Karen. If there are any further discussions, seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
The motion carries five zero. I would strongly urge you to work as closely as you can to make sure that we don't have folks stacking up on, on the driftway on a Saturday when everyone's going to the dump and go green. Because it will not end well.
I, I realize that. And, you know, I think, you know, we can just base this on the success of our grand opening. You know, that worked out great. We didn't really, we didn't have any issues, so I expect this to, to go smoothly.
And, and I enjoyed my three-quarter mile walk to come see you. It's fine, good. All right. Well, thank you and good luck. I hope, I hope it goes.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Good luck.
Um, I think every board member has a, did Mr. Vignani, do you have a dog?
No, a rabbit.
You have a rabbit? All right. Well, we're all pet owners. We can bring your rabbit to the rabbit park when we get that done. Um, we are now onto our A10, which is, um, the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement with the laborers union. We have Bob Clark, our human resources director. This was postponed two weeks ago because, um, the laborers had not agreed to it. So I'm assuming they have now.
They have.
Okay. Would you like to tee this up?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, again, it's a memorandum of agreement between the town of Situate and the laborers union. Um, the laborers union, uh, represents basically the members of the, uh, employees of the DPW department. So this is about 44 members. This is a, uh, this is a three-year contract. The last few MOAs that I've presented to the board have just been one-year contracts. So, so this one's, um, mu- far more extensive than that one. This MOA has actually amendments on, um, to, to 19 different articles. So, um, and I'm sure we don't want to go through one by one. So maybe what I'll do is, is give you a bit of, of an overview, um, of the, sort of the key points of the MOA. So, uh, starting with the sort of economic, um, in, impact. So we have, uh, have a tentative agreement on a 1.5% increase, retroactive increase for FY21, 1.5% for FY22 and a 2% increase for FY23. We believe these are reasonable and modest increases. Um, we've also added a, um, a, a step for, a longevity step for employees who've been with, with, uh, the laborers union for 25 years or more. That only impacts at this point, one employee. I think next year there may be another employee, so it's a, a modest in, um, increase. One other thing that, that we did with this MOA is we really looked at, at, um, some of the stipends and, and, um, that we gave to employees for different, different certifications or, um, qualifications that they had. For instance, we, we had, we've added, um, two new stipends. One, we would give $500 per year for any employee who has a CDLA, another $500 for anyone who has a tanker's endorsement. And one of the reasons we were amenable to that is because, um, the DPW department owns a number of vehicles that require some of these higher level licensing, licenses. And, um, we only have a limited number of employees who can drive them. So we're trying to sort of incentivize some, um, the employees going ahead and getting those licenses. So, um, we're hoping that, that, that gives us a little bit more management flexibility down the road if more people can drive the, the different vehicles. Same, same thing with the tanker endorsement. I think we only have two people who can, who can drive that particular truck that requires that. We also have looked at increasing the stipend for people who have like higher level certifications for water and wastewater. There's only a few people who have currently have that now, so. But again, we're trying to incentivize the, um, our stipend practices and, and trying to get more people to, to go forward and, and get those certifications or, or licenses that, that help us. And so, you know, there's, there's a few other, you know, minor changes. Cell phone stipend increased $2 a week for the people who, 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 um, who have to, they often have to use their cell phones in order for us to be in touch with them because they're out on the road all the time. So we, um, we added that. Um, we increased standby pay from $180 a week to, this is someone who's basically on call, $180 a week to $200 a week. It's, it's, um, you know, it hasn't increased, I think, in five or six years, so. Those, I think, are sort of the, the highlights in terms of the, the, the economic proposals. There's a number of additional change that we made that were more, you know, sort of clarifying language, maybe cleanup language. Before I get into that, any questions on any of the, the economic pieces?
Ms. Conley?
I do. Um, a question, Bob. If, if someone needs an additional certification to drive, you know, a more, a heavier truck, whatever, or a hazard, hazard truck, who pays for them to get the certification? I am su- I assume certification doesn't come for nothing.
That's Nancy? Do, what, paying for the certifications, Nancy? Do you, do you remember on the, off the top of my head?
It's not on the contract that we paid for the certification. There are some licenses that we cover the cost of the renewals. But if they want to go out and get that certification, it'll be on their own.
So I guess it begs the question, does the $500, whatever this incentive it, incentivification is, it, does it cover the cost of getting the new cert, of getting an additional or a better certification? Or is, does the employee?
I, I, I think it does. I, I think for the CDL, I think the test is $250. And once you have that, you have, you know, so, um, you know, so it comes that, I don't know. You know, is, is, there's different levels of CDLs, A, B, C. But, um, and I think they're all $250 for the test, so.
Well, I guess the other question I would have then, if we're that low on some of these people to drive some of these vehicles, it just seems to me as though we would want to decide that we need to get people to get those certifications and to be sure that the incentive is enough of an incentive to, you know, make it worth their while, so.
Well, we'll, we'll see, Karen. I mean, we think these are, uh, reasonable stipends. And remember, it's not a one-time stipend. They get it every year they have the license, so. We'll see. If it turns out it's not, then it's a conversation we'll have to have in the next contract. But we think it will get some people, uh, to go out and get these licenses. Or if we have a vacancy, attract people who already have them.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Clark, Mr. Vignani?
Hey, Bob. Um, what is the step increase for 25 years? What's the percent?
It's 4%. So it's a 4% increase after, after 25 years.
Okay. And we used to, uh, a while ago, get just a whole financial impact of this contract. I mean, there's not a lot in this one, but that would show the increase in stipends and other stuff like that. You know, the step increases and just kind of bullet point all that stuff, which is easier for us to kind of decipher.
Yeah, that's something I think we can, we can pull together. That's something we, we want. I, I have a, yeah, we, we, I do know that the, the 1.5%. That was, again, that was, in, in, obviously overtime impacted that as well. We have to give a 1.5% increase for the overtime. This is retroactive back to July 1st, but that's anticipated to, to cost about $48,000 for the, for the 1.5%. This is retroactive back to July first, but that's anticipated to, to cost about forty eight thousand for the, for the one and a half percent. And, you know, the, but, but we can certainly do a summary on some of the other, other potential expenses as well.
Yeah, just, just the financial impact. And, and that includes vacation days and, you know, there's some monetary number too.
Right.
To that sort of stuff too. Not that, I mean, like, this contract's pretty straightforward.
Right. And, and then just on some of the other, there's additional sort of clarifying language. There were, there were aspects of the contract that we, you know, for instance, it, when, when it, when it talked about arbitration, for instance, there was no timeline on that. So it was basically just sort of this, this open ended arbitration that, that the union could file for arbitration two years after an incident occurred. So, so we put limits on that, that timeline. So they'd have to apply for arbitration within forty five days. There was no limit on the recall language. If we laid someone off, they would have indefinite recall rights to a position. So we limited that to two years after, after positions eliminated. So, you know, we, we, we really tried to clean up a lot of language. There was, there was a lot of, of language in there that, that wasn't particularly, you know, friendly to the, the town. So we tried to, to address some of those concerns that we had. But, and again, and a lot of it was just removing unnecessary language that was just outdated and unnecessary and, and, and just comes with, to be honest with you. So.
Great. Are there additional questions for Mr. Clark? We did get this back up at the last meeting and it really, it, it demonstrated how useful it has been to have our own human resources director to go through and, and do this work. So thank you, Bob, because it was very thorough and I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions or comments about this? This, this vote? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
Words?
I will motion to approve the collective bargaining memorandum of agreement for the laborers union local one one six two bargaining unit.
Moved by Ms. Kern. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Vignani. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this matter requires a roll call vote. Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you. The matter passes five zero unanimously. Thank you, Bob. I know this is, this is yeoman's work, you and Jim, working with our unions to, to get to these agreements. And delighted that it's a three year agreement for your sake as well as ours. Great. So the next matter, actually, you're on the next committee. You're welcome to stay with us or
Well.
whatever you'd like, Mr. Clark. Our next, I, I see Nikki is here. Nikki, are you guys prepared? I know we're ahead of schedule. Okay. So our
You're ready.
All right. Our eight twenty is our diversity, equity, inclusion committee report. Nikki Sanders Meehan is our, is the chair. Oh crap, I'm just sorry, excuse me. I just, I've got double screens going here, is our chair. I will just tee you up before we introduce you as three or four months ago, the Board of Selectmen created a brand new committee, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, which was named something different. And one of the first things we, you guys did was change your name. And in your charge, you are required to report to this board every quarter. This is your first update of what you've been up to for the last three months. I know you've been very busy. And so the board did receive a number of backup documentation, documents that, you know, outline what you're going to present. But without stealing your thunder, I will turn it over to you. And we're very anxious to see how you progressed. And I, before you do start, I do want to thank our liaison has been Mara Kern, who has very steadfastly tried to support this new endeavor. So thank you, Mara, for that. So Nikki, I will turn it over to you. And if you would let us know what you've been up to for the last couple of months.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we have been very, very busy and select person Kern has been extremely helpful in getting us up and running, understanding how public committees work, what we can do, what we can't do, and how many people we can meet with. And quorums and all of that. So that was kind of the first order of business. We had to choose a chair. Vice Chair is Tom Secor. And our secretary, who does a fantastic job, is Ruth Yassin. The first order of business was to read the charge and see exactly what we were truly supposed to do. From there, we created a list of goals. Three in particular that we focused on, and I'll just tell you really quickly. One was to increase BIPOC, Black Indigenous People of Color representation in town employees, including administrative positions. So that, one was to move beyond tolerance and respect affirmation, solidarity, and action by affirming that DEI has positive effects on the entire community's well being and success. And another goal was to ensure that diverse communities within Situate are served equitably and that individuals who experience discrimination, harassment, or incidents resulting from bias have recourse and support through transparent and easily accessible channels. So that's where we begin. From there, we worked very hard to come up with a list of initial questions for information gathering purposes. And we have done that. And I believe tomorrow, those initial questions will go out to town departments after Mr. Clark and select person Kern sent out their initial communication to say that we were on our way. So that begins, I think we send those out. I mean, I think they speak with the departments tomorrow and the following day that those initial questions will be sent out. Thanks. I see Mr. Clark nodding. Good. So I just prepared a couple of notes to just kind of let you know the feel of what's been going on outside of that. So we're working really hard to be organized and to gather relevant information from each and every town department and committee, and then to follow up with each department and committee prior to submitting any recommendations to you. This first time around, it was decided that we would simply let you know what's going on. We didn't necessarily choose which departments to work through, but we're in the process of choosing that now. Project plans were created, procedural documents for subcommit, how to create a subcommittee and Excel spreadsheets and a smorgasbord of OCD documents and type A type ways to collect information. And we've, we've chosen Slack. And Angela Dre is our leader for collecting documents and placing them in Slack so that we can read them without commenting on them and then take them out, vote on them, change them and put them back in. So we all have, we're all working from the same set of documents and information. So again, select person Kern was very helpful in figuring out, can we do that? How should we do that? And what's the best way to get that done? So we now have that squared away. I think a huge challenge, which I knew, and I think even in interviews, I mentioned, and I had a short back and forth with select person Vignani on how to get community sentiment about these issues, about what's going on and how to reach kind of marginalized members of the Situate community. So one thing I did was ask a few friends that I know are working on issues directly related to people of color to come to our meeting during the public comment section and give us, you know, what's on their mind? What are they working on? What are they most concerned about? And that was very helpful and very enlightening because obviously we were in the minutia of project plans, et cetera. And, and, you know, you can create a project plan that has absolutely nothing to do with what's needed in the community. And we don't, we don't want to do that. So the public comment section, the other thing that we decided to use was the Hingham Unity Council Diversity Equity Inclusion Survey. They created a survey, which they have now disseminated through several towns on the South Shore, including Situate. And so we kind of spread it out to all the groups that we know and people that we know to get them to put input in on what do you know about diversity, equity, inclusion? Are you a person of color? Are you, are you from the queer community? What, how do you feel about these things? And it's a short survey, but I think the results will be really helpful and guide us in really informative ways on how to move forward with our suggestions to you. So that's another piece. And then finally, we created two subcommittees because there are two elements of our community that this board didn't have really any kind of information about or access to. One is a youth subcommittee and Jen Arnold, Michael Hayes, and Nicole Brandolini from the school committee in the school district have agreed to inform us on what's going on, keep us informed on those things. And Jen Arnold, I'm hoping, and I think, you know, will, will be a good team with working through how to incorporate the youth comments and information and suggestions. We do have a charge for both subcommittees. And we now, thanks to Tom Secor, have a procedure in place for how to create a subcommittee for our committee. So we created that as, oh yeah, we've got some solid OCD'ers in this group and it's been very, very helpful. I mean, I definitely appreciate it as a type A. It's fantastic. And it also makes my job a lot easier to know that there's subgroups of the appropriate amount of people talking about things that we need to flush through so that we can then bring it to committee and have a full conversation about it. And it's working out really well. The second subcommittee that we agreed to create was one on Committee on Incidents Based in Bias. And I had a, a long conversation with Lieutenant O'Shea, also a liaison and a fantastic member of our group. I mean, she's doing a, a bang up job and it's not always easy for her. But she really has risen to the occasion. And we had a long discussion on what that might look like. And when incidents based in bias or incidents based in hate transition into a hate crime, which then it would have to move towards the police department. So we're working out how that would be reported and all of those things. Both of those subcommittees have a charge and it's basically to make recommendations to us on what people of color or those underrepresented in the community think should be included in the recommendations we make to you. So those are our efforts to kind of reach broader into the community and kind of draw people in. I will tell you, and I have some notes at the end, I will tell you that one of the major comments that I got after we kind of had our public comment section was that it was a woman of color who said, I don't necessarily feel comfortable going to town meetings. I did go because I did have this issue I wanted to bring up. But I don't feel comfortable there. But tonight, when I came to this meeting, I felt very comfortable there. I didn't talk because that's not my way. But I did feel comfortable that if I really wanted to, that I would have someplace to go. I would have a place to kind of be more participatory in town government. And that felt really, really good to me. So I'm so happy that you're there. My notes on, on this are several. One, community input. One of the things that came up from that kind of community session was the har, the building in the harbor and potentially making that a cultural center so that that's kind of like where you go for cultural events and hosting and gathering. This is something that's also come up. I'm also part of another group that includes leaders from Hingham and Cohasset and Duxbury and Hanover, who we are, you know, neck and neck with in terms of our town statement on diversity, equity, inclusion. Hanover's statement is extraordinarily powerful. And I would say ours is as powerful or even more powerful than theirs. So people are looking to Situate, Hanover, Easton, which is, has a fantastic human rights subcommittee that was created by their Board of Selectmen. These are towns that are, everyone's saying, can I see your minutes? Can I see your notes? What are you doing next? So we are leaders, both through our interaction with our police department and the things that we have pursued there and the information, but also in terms of what we're doing and, and what this committee is doing. So we're looked to for, how do we get it done? How do we bring this to our community as well? That being said, the cultural center came up, a place of gathering for people of color to meet with other people of color or express themselves culturally. A sister city in Cape Verde, that was something that has come up in not one, but several meetings. And there was some interest in that. Again, the issue is people, Cape Verdean people that have lived here for a very long time, don't necessarily feel comfortable speaking in public or bringing things up in public. But there is a desire definitely from that community to, you know, to have something similar. And I think Angela Dre is looking into that and falling through with what, what could be done for that. These are my, my notes. So this isn't necessarily the committee notes, but these are my notes. One thing that I noticed was that Mr. Bedrow is the affirmative action officer, the fair housing officer, the town administrator, and the state ethics commission representative. Apparently someone told me he's also a butcher, a baker, and a candlestick maker. So it seems that he might be pretty busy with all that he's got going on. Those are super, super, super from my point of view as chair of this committee, very, very, very important positions. And it sounds like from all accounts, he's doing a bang up job with all of them. It does, it is concerning that there's one person that has to do all of that. And that, that's just a concern. I'm just putting out there for comment.
Nikki, can I interrupt for just one?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you. I mean, lot of stuff. I know you guys have been working like at light speed. And I, I, I don't, I know Mara, I'm going to ask her to sort of liaison to our board, but I've been trying to jump in and out because this is an important initiative. You have provided, provided us with some recommendations and progress notes. None of, you know, which, which I assume that your board has presented. So I do want to have some time to just talk about those. But before we get to those, with your permission, I'd like to, when you've already, you've got one, two, three, four, five of your member, four of your members here. I don't know if you wanted to invite any of them to add to, I mean, this is our, this is our inaugural report.
Yes.
And
I just heard
Yeah, go ahead.
Comments. And then I think you'll learn a lot from each of the members that are here tonight. So just really quickly, the last two comments. One, I guess we're trying to figure out what is the charge of the Situate Cultural Commission because it appears on a list of committees or boards that is selected by the select board. Also, there's another commission called Situate Harbor Cultural District Committee. So we're just wondering what that charge looks like and is, and is it inclusive of everybody? And what's the language of that charge? And then finally, I have a couple of things. Perhaps a police activities league. We've lost Kim Kelly Harriman, so we know that you're working on filling that position. And in filling that position, we might, we wondered if you, I wondered if you might consider a youth position for this committee because that would alleviate a lot, especially where there's now a subcommittee for you. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the rest of our committee. And I'm sure you'll be overwhelmed with how dedicated they are and how much work that we've done in three months.
Yeah, we absolutely got that flavor. Thank you for that. I know how much work we are, there's, oh, and now we've got another member. Hello, Reverend Stewart. Yeah, so this, we charged your group with, with a big ask. And we were all delighted that we had exceptional people stand up so much that we had to turn people away. So we had no doubt that you guys were going to hit the ground running. So I appreciate that. Obviously, the first three months, there's a lot of just sort of figuring out how you're going to figure out. So thank you for the written notes that you provided that sort of show where you've gone. So thank you for the written notes that you provided that sort of show where you've gone on that. And I'm, I will open it up to everyone. I want to be as pithy as possible because your job is to give us the overview of what you've accomplished, what you recommend and what you need from us. And you've done a great job of teeing that up. One question I want to just, before we, we dive in is, is the, and you touched on this a little bit, Nikki, is the inventory, what exists? I mean, you're talking about a lot of things that need to be done. There's, there's, this can, you know, this is a many armed project. But, you know, to me, in setting up sort of the structure is figuring out, okay, we have all these lanes of things we want to investigate. How do we determine what's there? And I, I did have the opportunity to speak with Nikki earlier today and she was talking about some of the avenues for, I call it inventory, I don't know what word is better, of what exists today. Because there are some recommendations in the packet we received that it's like, all right, well, we're doing some of that. So if, I don't know, Nikki, if you can direct who's the best person to answer sort of where that is.
I mean, anyone, anyone, Celia, I see Ms. Dre, I see, and Ms. Yassine, I believe, is still here. I know that Reverend Stewart was part of creating the goals to move us forward. So I don't know if they're unmuted or could unmute and maybe contribute. I will say that the survey that goes out this week is definitely part of our effort to move the needle on the collection of that information. It's kind of a first pass at, can we get this information to know what else we need? So that survey I think is helpful, but I see Ms. Risha has
Celia, would you like to add? Celia Risha, you are one of our valued members of this committee.
Great. Thank you all. Yeah. So as Nikki said initially, we're awaiting the results from the the survey that the Hang Immunity Council shared. So that will help us with some data. But she also shared, select person Curran and Mr. Clark will be meeting with the department heads this week. And then we're going to be sending out a survey to all of them to complete as well. And once we receive that qualitative information, we can dig deeper and see what other information you need to gather because of the liaisons we have through Mr. Clark and select person Curran, we can get a lot of it through just the members of our committee. So we're just trying to be diligent before we pepper all the departments with questions and see what we can find. And then follow up to dig deeper. I know the document said those were recommendations. A lot of them are really are just things were considered for potential recommendations. So just take that with a grain of salt. But a lot of them have also come up from public comment time during our meetings, like questions about bathrooms and public buildings and Situate and, and other matters. So they are really important to us. I would say in terms of the broadest goal for the committee, you know, if we look at only the town and the town employees, we want everybody at the end of this process to apply an equity lens to whatever their job is, whether they're paving roads or writing HR policies. How can you just do that more equitably? And I think it can't just be up to us or any DEI officer or Mr. Clark. I think people put DEI in the HR box, but it's really incumbent upon every person that works for or represents the town. So we're just digging deeper right now. And I think after this week's conversations and after we get results from the surveys, we'll have more recommendations to actually give.
Celia, thank you. That's exactly, exactly where I was. I personally was hoping that your committee was sort of organizing. Mara, I, I, I'm going to look to our select liaison. Ms. Curran, do you want to add? I know that you've been, you know, standing by at the ready to help.
I'll just say quickly, because I want to give the rest of the board opportunity to ask them questions. I think it's more important, but I just want the rest of the Board of Selectmen to really understand that this group has really dug in quickly and the amount of work that they've done to try to organize themselves. You know, as everyone has said in the onset, it's a very broad topic in really trying to whittle down how to move forward in a fashion that is organized, factual, and can actually have some great impact. Has been difficult. You know, I always sort of describe it as we've got some members that are already at Z. And we've got a lot of us are that A. So we're, we're trying to get through that process. You know, a lot of folks see the end game already, but it's a process. So that's been the biggest challenge, I think, for everybody. But I think they're beyond that now. Finally, we're finally moving to, to collect some good information and I'm going to be quiet. They've done a great job and I want my, my other board members to have an opportunity to hear from them. Because they have some good first pass recommendations.
Yeah. So I will, I will look at Ms. Dre and Reverend Stewart. I see, because you're on video. Did you guys want to add any comments before I ask, open up to the board for questions about your progress?
No, I don't have anything to add, except that I'm really enjoying this committee. I think everyone's doing a wonderful job. And like Nikki said, I think there's been a lot of, you know, work on the process. And I think we're eager to get into, you know, the community engagement, which I'm very interested in. So again, I think everyone's doing a wonderful job and, you know, thank you Board of, Select Board for creating this committee.
Reverend Stewart?
Yeah, I'll just kind of echo what Angela just said. You know, we're four months into this and we've just dug in quick and fast and hard, but it's good. And I feel like we're sort of right on that cusp now. I'm starting to really start to gather the information that we had wanted, but you got to get organized at the beginning. So I think we're going to see a lot of good things. I'm, I've also been concerned, but I think we're, we're handling it well, the the scope of this, because it's so big. I know we kind of started a little bit with the lens of racism, but I mean, DEI applies much, much more broadly. So we're trying our best to incorporate all of that, other parts beyond racism as well.
Thank, thank you for that. I, I have to commend you because I mean, normally it takes, I mean, you guys have come out of the gate incredibly fast, which is what we asked you to do. And we expected because of the amazing response we had from people wanting to serve on this. But kudos to everybody because it, it is, it just takes a while to get organized and get over things. So to your point, Reverend Stewart, about scope, I do, and I'll open up to the board because I'm sure they have comments as well, but looking at the, the, you know, you know, I, I will take the recommendations and the, and the documentation we received as a work in progress, which is a substantial work in progress. That we knew when we set this group up that, that would be very hard to stay in your lane, which is policies, procedures and boring, wonky stuff that we control. We knew that was going to be hard. And I commend you because yeah, you kind of have some things that are out there, but I don't think they're so out there that we can't find ways to make it work. And I think that the the conversations, as Nikki pointed out, that somebody can come to your particular group and bring up issues, maybe they're not comfortable elsewhere. That's a win out of the box. So that, that I really, I really am excited about. But yeah, so you know, we're going to, I know Mara is in the trenches with you and she'll do her best to keep you in your lane, which is how we can look at what we do now, make it better and make the place, the world a better place, basically. There are things on your recommendation that I, I did have a debrief with Nikki earlier that are like, all right, that's not really in your lane, but here's how you can get it done someplace else. So I think those conversations can have, happen in parallel. But we have to remember that, you know, to, to the Reverend's point is you can overwhelm yourself and this happens on many committees with all of the things you want to accomplish because you're passionate about whatever your subject matter is. And that sometimes you just have to, you know, pick a few priorities, get those done and then move on, or you're going to, or you're going to, you know, be weighted down by the the, the responsibilities of your community. So those are my things. I want to open it up to my board. Very impressed with what you've accomplished in a short amount of time. Would the board like to add any comments or questions based on the recommendations or the statements made tonight? Looking at boxes, Ms. Connolly?
I'll start with, could anyone explain to me what is meant by safe space norms? And what in particular, when you talk about that? What do you mean by it?
I'll take that. So at the beginning of every meeting, I'm looking for it now, I'm looking for an agenda. But at the beginning of every meeting, we start, I, I open the meeting with the governor, et cetera. And then I'll do a tribal acknowledgement for the Wampanoans. And then we have a list of comments that we make that are, oh, here we go, that are inclusive and welcoming. So I'll just read a few. This is a safe space for people of color and for all underrepresented people and communities. Any comments that are inappropriate or have an animus in racism or bias will not be allowed. We will turn off your sound if your comments are offensive to this meeting. This is a safe space where people can bring up challenges and questions without fear of repercussion or hostility. And I'll read one more, which I think is wonderful. Assume best intentions. All participants are embarking on this journey at different starting points. Now, your meeting might not have the exact same safe space norms that our meeting has. But it's the idea of letting people know that you have a voice here, that we are open to listening to you and that what we're doing here should be and is inclusive of you. So that's an idea. And we're happy to share ours. I think Ms. Risha was the one who gave us ours and we consider it as well as everything for right now, a work in progress to add, to change. I know I added other, I think it was race and other represented people because there was a neurodiversity talk. And I was like, well, this doesn't include that. So we need to include that. And now we have closed captioning for all of our meetings. So.
So are you, so you're suggesting basically that every single board and committee could fashion their own perhaps statement of one or two things like, I know a few years ago civility was a big problem on in meetings. And there was a point where people had to be reminded over and over and over again, be civil, be kind. So I, so that's what you mean by safe space norms? And they wouldn't necessarily be the same for all committees, but even just reminders to people that we are engaged in civic meetings here and they should be civil and they should be kind. And your opinion is valued and we want you to know that. So.
I think, I think safe space and norms have stemmed from welcoming of people of color and underrepresented groups. So, so long as your safe space norms includes a statement about that. And, you know, if it's civility or whatever, or whatever is your focus, I think that's, but I mean, the intention initially is to say, you know, everyone's welcome here, regardless of race, creed, neurodiverse, whatever it is. So that, that's generally the suggestion. And there are groups that are super focused on this. For instance, Stride is very focused on, and I think it came from someone from the Stride community that we need to work bet to create a better safe space and norm. So they're very, you know, focused on including this as part of the conversation for the opening of meetings.
Thank you, Nikki. Karen, did you have a follow up question or?
Well, I just, I just wanted to comment that I think that your committee has not been able to meet in person, I assume, right?
No, never.
They've been virtual since the beginning. And I think one of the, if I can say that there's some silver lining to this awful pandemic, that more people have actually been able to participate in public meetings because of this. And all of a sudden, people who would normally not come down to town hall to sit in the meeting room to, for your committee or our committee or any committee, actually do feel like they can, you know, have a voice and that people who aren't able to get out of the house for whatever reason, or that simply want to zoom in and out of a meeting to discuss a topic that they, you know, are, are interested in. So I think this has been valuable. And what I would hope is that we not revert back to we're doing everything in person. I hope that we will be able to continue giving people access to public meetings via this sort of a a platform. So unfortunately for you, you haven't been able to meet in person, but I think it's, I, I think we'll learn a lot from this. But thank you for all, for your work you do. And I know how hard it is to start something up, but clearly you're doing good. Thank you.
Just to follow up on, so, so Ms. Connolly is referring to one of the recommendations is to recommend a board's safe space norms. I would, I would recommend, and I, I, I look to the board to see if they support this, is that one of your next steps is you guys are the topic experts on this. You're doing the hard work on this. If you can come up with, you know, maybe in the next three months, a specific recommendation to what that looks like. I think the concept makes sense. It's, I mean, it's a combination of inclusion and civility and all those things. Marry those with how we have to conduct meetings, Rob's rules on the meeting laws, all that. That would be very beneficial to the board to see, to say, okay, this, I mean, I would personally have be delighted to start a meeting with, you know, instead of saying the Governor Baker's rules of blah, 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 as we have to do now, is say, we're meeting the meeting, you know, convening a meeting of the board of selectmen. This is, this is, this meeting will be conducted under the, you know, whatever, conducted under the guidelines that we have adopted as a town for safe space, whatever. So I would love for you guys to flesh that out because I think you guys are the right people to do that. I'd like to, I'm sorry, I don't, I, I have a ten, I'm very passionate about this as well. So I will try not to hijack. Would the rest of the board like to add any comments, questions? I'm looking, I'm looking at little Hollywood squares here. Mr. Goodrich, you look.
Yeah, so so on one of the recommendations, number three, so that the select board would share information with us to allow us to assist. Is there is there anything specific that you think that you would need or that you're not getting or, or I guess precisely what did, what did that mean, I guess? This is a better way to phrase this.
Yeah, I, I think Reverend Stewart wants to speak this as well. For me, that means if you're making any decisions with money. So procurement issues, those, that's kind of like, so we see, I think I see us going through departments and talking with people and finding out, you know, what's going on. Okay, you're doing, maybe try this. And then there's a whole other piece of procurement that runs across the whole town. So that is interesting. The other thing I would say is, sorry, I just lost my train of thought, hiring and procurement. Those are the two major things. Like today, as I was listening to your meeting, you know, I was just listening to who is where and, you know, there might be an opening and you had to vote on the, the, on Tango leaving. So you do have decisions that you make on who works for you. And so that would be, for me, that would be something that I would want to know what's coming up, who's changing hands, what's changing hands in terms of leadership, those type of things. Reverend Stewart?
Yeah, I was just going to say any decision that you would be making that could have some implications into equity of any kind. That if you're thinking about it, we thought it would be nice if you let us know, Mara can let us know. And then we can sort of be advised, as our role states, to be advisors to you for that. So that was a very broad sort of, that's why we didn't narrow it too much, is that it was very broad from hiring to procurement to really anything, even if there's a situation with some of the town spaces and how they would be used or who would be allowed to have access to them or limit access to them and things like that, just to sort of allow us to have them, have some time to consider it as a committee and, and give any advice we might have if there's any sort of and give any advice we might have if there's any sort of equity issues that may be involved for you to consider in your decision.
I think more specifically, um, it's my understanding that there was or is an opening for, in the police department or it may be coming up. And um, Mr. Clark is so fantastic in telling us, you know, how that goes in terms of union. And then Lieutenant O'Shea came in and said, this is the process we use. And um, I know ultimately it has to be kind of blessed by you and, and the chief. But I, I think those decisions matter. Um, and um, those are, you know, those are things that, you know, we'd like to know, have a conversation about. Um, a lot of the people on this committee are involved elsewhere. Metco, um, South Shore, whatever, um, Interfaith, you know. So they, they're pulling from what's being talked about in terms of diversity from where, where they're o, otherwise involved. So I think they're huge resources for um, advice and recommendations, which is what we're here for. So.
Okay, so what I'm, I'm hearing, I'm gonna try to sum up because we are, we are in a, on a short fuse tonight, unfortunately. I don't want to short ship this conversation, but what I'm hearing is exactly what we anticipated, that this is going to be a very iterative kind of thing. So our board has charged you with certain things, which is to investigate things like, how do we hire? How do we do these things? So that you have a thorough understanding of what, of what the box looks like, right? So when you say you want to know when we have an opening in a department, we would also expect that you would understand what the hiring practices are. You can't just, you know, say, oh, we should do it differently because as I'm sure Mr. Clark has explained, there's other factors. We have unions, we have contracts, all of those things. So we have to, we have to look at all of this in that box. At the same time, as I think Celia pointed out, we are already benefiting from saying, putting that lens in front of those decisions. So it's gonna, I think we're gonna find that it's kind of this growing thing that Bob's obviously much more aware of the things that you guys have discussed and he's our human resources. He will then translate that to, oh, we're in the middle of a labor conversation with our union. How do we marry those things? So I think the process is beginning to work. And I think the question about what do you need to know, we're gonna have to find a way to, to collaborate. And some of the burden will be on your group to do your homework so that, you know, you're like, why don't you do that? And it's like, well, because there's a union contract or there's a this or whatever. So um, I love that we're gonna meet quarterly because the, that'll keep everybody on track and we can, I think we're gonna find we're doing this a lot. Um, and uh, just from, from what you said tonight, I think that's the case. So um, I'm excited about this process. Um, there's, I mean, we could talk about this all night. I did, I, I did talk to Nikki earlier, like, if there's anything we want to put up in on and talk about before the next quarterly update, by all means, we'll do that. Um, because some things, you know, deserve a deeper dive, but for the purposes of tonight, we wanted to say, are you on track? Do you have questions? Can we help you? What's next? So I, I do want to see, are there any other board members that have questions on this matter? Mr. Vignoni?
Yeah, I just, just a, a couple of quick points. Um, conceptually, I, I, I love some of the thoughts, you know, and I, I think it really is here in the right place. Similar to Karen and Andrew, when I read these recommendations, I'm not sure I understand what you're asking for. So somebody mentioned they were broad based and I was reading, I didn't know what a safe space norm was. I didn't really know what you were looking at in terms of trying to follow other things. And I thought you may be able to try and police situations. So if you can maybe be a little bit more specific on what you're actually trying to do, that would be helpful for, for me. Um, and I'm, I am probably, how do I say this? Um, so I took the survey from Hingham and it, it really didn't apply to me. Right? I am a white male and I don't, I don't run into the situations that they were looking for answers for. And I'm really interested to hear from the people that do run into those situations. And I think, I think you just have to think about that as you target these surveys and as you target your questions and your audiences, because a lot of it has got to be educational to people like me, because I don't know. Um, so tha, that's just my, my two cents from where you're headed and what you're trying to do. You've got to educate me on what's going on out there and talk to the people that it's impacting and inform me as opposed to ask me.
I, I get what you're saying there and that is very tricky. Um, but I, I will say this, um, you, you said, this doesn't impact me because I'm, I'm not running into that as a white male. And I would say that's probably not entirely true.
Yeah, impact's the wrong word.
Right, no, I understand. I, I totally got the essence of, of what you were saying, but here it is. I mean, I think that um, we've seen a lot of things that we want to avoid happening here ever in the news. So what that's done is it's beg the question of what is my role or do I have a role or am I willing to take a role in inserting myself into situations that don't really affect me, right? So.
Yeah.
That way is very important. But what I will say is that, yeah, some people don't know what BIPOC means. Right? They don't know what that full acronym means, what it's used for, why people use it. They simply don't. Safe norms also, it's a new thing, but it comes out of this uh, movement for greater participation and awareness, right? So for instance, if someone's like, oh, you're racist and you don't get mad about it, that's a problem. But if you are mad about it, that's good because you're upset about it. But I think like, we have to kind of cha, we have to acknowledge that, one, and I, I want to bring this into this too, and I know we're running over, but one, our job is simply to make the recommendation to you. It is not to actually do the work unless you say, now we want you to go and do the work. That's one. And I, I, I really want to make sure we say that. The second thing is we have to define all of this should you decide to move forward on anything. So for instance, with the safe space and norms, you were like, okay, we may talk about that. Send us what we might write and then we'll tweak it, right? So we have, we do know that, or I know, I don't want to speak for everyone in the committee, I know that when we send you kind of what we see going on elsewhere that we think is positive and can be helpful, we also have to uh, flesh it out. Right? Well, I definitely get that.
Yeah, I don't know if you were, if you were uh, that's exactly what I meant, but I, I, I think part of it was, part of your role is um, informing people like me and um, getting knowledge from people not like me. And, and that's, that's what I was trying to get across. I, I think the safe space norms made a heck of a lot of sense once I knew what it was. Um, so that educational component of, so anyways, we could go on forever here. I'm, I'll, I'll stop now, but I'm looking forward to future conversations.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Karen, I just, I just want to add one thing. I think it might help clarify a little bit. So I think what the committee has kind of talked about is going through, because they're charged with policies and procedures, right, is going through and and surveying and talking to the departments first, our town departments, to find out what are they doing today? You know, and Bob's been very instrumental in formulating and helping those questions be put together. You know, what do we have to change, if anything? And then the second piece is exactly what you're talking about, going out to the community. And whether it's holding a forum or a survey or whatever that best form of um, outreach is to find out exactly what you're asking Tony, right? We need to know, you know, how uh, persons of color or uh, you know, other, other compromised groups and not compromised groups, but other groups as well, you know, whether it's gender, color, uh, whatever, whatever those different classifications are, you know, how do they feel when they're in situ and what can we do to be better as a community to make them feel welcome? Um, and make sure that our policies and our procedures are equitable from all aspects. But we won't know, like you said, until we also survey our community members. So that's almost like phase two that this group is working through as well. So it's a long process.
It's a long process and we've got the right people in place, I have no doubt. Um, and we do have an opening, as I think Nikki alluded to a while ago. Um, so we will, as a board, need to address that as well. Um, as I did note, we had more people than we could place, so I feel very comfortable that we'll be able to, to um, add somebody and I'd like to do that as quickly as possible. You need all hands on deck. Um, I really appreciate the work you guys have done. Um, you've got great liaison with Bob and, and Mara and, and.
Lieutenant O'Shea.
Lieutenant O'Shea and just whatever. So we are all avail, we're all available, welcome and, and want to, you know, don't wait three months for, for the next conversation. Um, personal note, I have four years been waiting for a Cape Verdean celebration of some sort. So, you know, give me a call, we'll figure that out. Because, you know, it's such an integral part of our community that it should be celebrated. So that's very much my personal comments on that. Um, but that's the sort of thing that I think this group can really kind of, you know, use their momentum to get things done. So uh, reach out to any of us with clarification, qual, you know, whatever you need. Um, I think what you've done so far is you're working, you're uh, unless anyone disagrees, I think you guys are going a hundred percent in the right direction. Stay in your lane. Uh, where you deviate, find, find advocates that can support you because you can't do it all. As Reverend says, you know, stuff, you know, uh, you need to, you mean, you got bite type, you know, bite sized things to accomplish and you will make great strides. So appreciate you coming in tonight. I appreciate you keeping it to schedule. And uh, we will look forward to your next update and any inter, um, interim updates that you need. If you do need, just raise your hand and we'll, we'll find a way to, to support you guys because you're doing great work.
Adam Schiff, I could just.
Yes, Mr. Goodrich.
If there's something that they need that they don't think they're getting, uh, let me know and we'll facilitate that. So that's number one. And I, I want Nikki to know, I've never been a baker or a candlestick maker. At one point in my career, I actually was a butcher, so.
Wow. Doctor, who knew?
Uh, yeah. And if you want to jump on the charter review committees to see what we let him do, we're also looking at that stuff too. Yay. All right. Well, if that is the, I will conclude the um, discussion of the diversity equity committee if there are no other further comments. No? Okay. And I see, I see Becky has jumped on, but I really need to ask for a three minute break. Because we've been sitting in these chairs for a while. So Becky, apologize. Um, if the board has no objection, we will move uh, to reconvene. Let's reconvene at, I'm gonna make it interesting because I want to see if Tony does this, eight fifty seven.
Three minutes?
I'm like, what?
Three minutes?
All right, fine, nine o'clock.
Can't even stand up in three minutes.
Nine o'clock. Becky, you okay with that?
He's tough.
Hey, I gotta meet the eleven o'clock deadline here. All right. I missed the Nancy snack bowl breaks. Andrew, you really didn't get to benefit from the uh, the, the board meeting breaks in Nancy's office with all her snacks.
Well, I've been reading the uh, the Easter baskets of the boys. They don't need that many peanut butter cups.
So anyone who might consider wanting to run for selectmen, one of the perks is Nancy gives us snacks at breaks. When we're in pu, when we're in person. I am, I'm, I'm stuck with pretzels.
Who bought the pretzels?
I did.
I know, that's the problem.
I know, that's the problem.
Not as much fun as Nancy's snack.
Nancy has seriously tripped out. We've got Pop Tarts, we've got Rice Krispie Treats, and we have 7,000 pieces of candy.
God bless you, Nancy. Why are we doing town financial humming? To keep our sugar levels up. It's all good.
Sugar caffeine, it's what keeps us going.
All right, Tony's late. Becky, thank you for waiting. We're not that far back. Which is pretty good for us. All right, we have a quorum. I think we should talk about Tony or start the meeting and let him jump on. So we are, we're a little behind schedule, but we do have an eight forty-five review discussion vote of the off, water offset proposal. And our intrep- how long have you been the Chair of Water Resources?
Four years.
So it's been four years? Yeah, I think we, we have been aligned the whole time. So my whole memory has been.
Yes, yeah. Well, then more than that, because Mara was our liaison before you came on board.
Before, yeah. Well, thank you for your long service to this community. So Becky is here to present, and we have all the backup in our packet, a water offset proposal, which, parts of which we've discussed for many ti- many times. But they have laid out very succinctly in their proposals. So Becky, I will invite you to, to give the overview to the board.
Great, thank you. And thanks for hearing me out tonight. So this proposal or this policy recommendation is something that we've been working on since 2017, I would say, in the Water Resources Commission. And just a number of other things have kind of shifted priorities over the years. And, you know, between, you know, from the 2016 drought to, you know, having to go to a total outdoor water ban in June last year, a lot of issues around development or concerns around development. We couldn't continue to kind of knock this down on the priority list. So what the proposal is, I'll, I'll run through the, the, um, the structure of it. And then kind of give you some more background and talk about what we're hoping to accomplish here in this meeting. So the water offset program also has been called the water banking program. They're the same, just different terms. I know we've mentioned it in select board meetings as a bit water banking program. So this would recommend a one-to-one offset, which means that if a, for any, any projects, I'm sorry, that increases demand by 110 gallons of water per day. So if a project is going to increase demand by 260 gallons of water per day, applicant would need to offset 260 gallons per day somewhere else in the water system. So there are a couple of different ways of managing a program like this. There is kind of what I refer to as a project-based program, where the people who are, whether it's developers or residents is making the changes, would actually need to go and implement projects somewhere in the system to, again, put water back into the system. So it could be, they would go and retrofit municipal buildings with low-flow water fixtures or switch out smart meters. And that can be cumbersome and really difficult to manage. So this other method is a fee-based program, which is what we've been talking about for a number of years. So the applicant would pay a mitigation fee of $10 for each additional gallon of water required on the first day of occupancy. It's a one-time fee. And the town would create a sustainable water resource fund, which would be where these monies would go into. And the monies could only be used to fund projects that, again, put water back into the system. Some of those projects would be, you know, conservation and retrofits, whether it's municipal buildings or residential buildings. Smart meters, you know, the town has been working for years to get rid of all of the radio read, read meters and get smart meters to allow for more frequent, frequent reading and better identification of leaks. It could help identify new water sources. It could help fund things like rainwater catchment and cisterns for school and municipal fields, gray water reuse in municipal buildings, and education around water conservation with a focus on behavior change. And the other piece there is that the, the fees would need to be allocated by the water department within one year. So they wouldn't need to be spent within a year, but within a year of the fees going into the fund, the water department would need to say, determine which type of project those monies were going to go toward.
Why?
Why? Well, you know, so we worked with the Alliance for Water Efficiency, which is a national organization that helps cities and states implement all sorts of water conservation policies. And they have found that sometimes states, and this is a pretty common program, the water banking or water offsets on the West Coast. And a lot of times they would create these funds and the monies would just sit there and never actually pay for projects. So initially we thought, okay, well, let's have the money spent within a year. But then if we were looking for bigger projects, like identifying new sources of water, you wouldn't be able to spend the money in a year. So this would allow the money to be spent and not just have it sit there and, and to make sure that it was going towards projects that met the requirements of putting water back into the system. So I provided a chart that would show you at this one-to-one offset with the $10 fee, $10, $10 per additional gallon of water, what that fee would look like. So I put it into bedrooms or units, even though the requirement, the, um, the threshold is a gallons per day threshold of 110 gallons per day, which I believe is a threshold that is used for searing, which is where that number came from. So for one bedroom or for 110 gallons per day, mitigation fee would be $1,300 for four units, $5,200 for 50 units, $65,000 for 150 units, $195,000. And surely by coincidence, that's, I think, $5,000 off of what we ended up asking Toll Brothers to pay is kind of their mitigation for 150 units. And then I threw in this 242 for, you know, some of the impending larger developments. If we get something of that size, that would end up paying this fee, what that fee would look like. We would like to very much include commercial entities in this fee structure. We just really haven't been able to figure it out. So that's something that's kind of out there still. And let's see what else. Oh, I didn't mean to do that. Is that, oh, that's.
I did, I did that.
Okay, yeah, so there's that.
Because we're, we're a very, you know, visual oriented group here.
I love it. Sorry, I know I didn't prepare anything to show. So yeah, so there's my chart. Let me just get out of here. I wanted to share with you, with some, with you what some other towns are doing. I just have to figure out how to.
Want me to unshare?
No, no, that's, I think I can, can I?
I think we can do both. So I have to either go away, I'll go away. Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. So there are a number of other towns in Massachusetts that have similar programs. Many of the programs that have been implemented have been required by the state as a result of towns over withdrawing their Water Management Act permit, while others have been voluntary. With the most recent that I know is Ipswich just passed this in the fall, passing a similar program. But Acton is a program that's been around forever. Danvers has been around forever. Hingham had it for a while. Weymouth and Abington Rockland, those are the big ones. So the other thing I wanted to mention too, before I move on, is, you know, we also think that the burden shouldn't fall entirely on new development to help support putting water back into the system. We're all taking water out. We are in a stress basin. We are in a town with, with infrastructure that is unable to support our peak seasonal demands without the highest of restrictions. So we're also recommending that all customers pay an additional $1 per billing cycle to go into the fund. And again, that would help fund all of these items. And what else? So in 2018, I reviewed this policy with town council. She did approve the final version then. And the other thing that came out of that, you know, this policy would live within the water department's rules and regulations. It would just be something that would have to be done in order to receive a permanent, to have your water turned on. What else do I want to mention there? I also brought this to a number of committees back in 2017 and 2018 to get feedback. And all of that feedback has since been incorporated. One of the biggest things that I heard at pretty much every single meeting I was at, whether it was from someone on the board or from the, um, the audience, I just had such like a remembrance of in-person meetings where people could come and chit chat. Was that people thought that there should be a function by which proposals could reduce the fee that they had to pay if they brought forward a plan that would functionally save water. So wouldn't necessarily be something that would say, okay, I'll put low-flow aerators on, something that could easily be taken on or taken off. But if you use native landscaping or don't use any landscaping and everything is, is, is no water, things like that, things that are kind of permanent features of your development, that you could then decrease this fee. And we've seen this, Acton has a great program that we've kind of modeled or attempted to model. And again, Ipswich is working on something similar. And I think this program works the best when there's someone who can work, someone in the town who can work, especially with the larger developments, who can work with the applicants to really help them create a water smart development as opposed to just doing the bare minimum. And, you know, that, that's, again, I think this is, that's what these, these programs have the most long-term success. So as I mentioned before, you know, we're still trying to figure out the commercial entities piece, trying to figure out how the water department would actually manage this and trying to figure out that piece of how to kind of create the mitigation of the mitigation fee, how to, how to help developers and applicants de- functionally decrease their water use and then decrease the fee that they would owe. So my goal here tonight isn't necessarily to have you all accept this as is, but to really say, you know, this is as far as the volunteer advisory board of the Water Resources Commission that we can take this. We've worked on this for years. We've done a lot of research. We've worked with members of the town. We've worked with national organizations. But at this point, we kind of need an allocation of resources. If this Leckwardt would choose to say, or the water commissioners decide that this is policy that they want to support, we need to either bring in a consultant, identify someone in the town who can take this on and figure out those final pieces and then figure out the implementation. Every town I've worked, I've spoken to, it's not a volunteer board that's implementing this. It's the town planner, it's the superintendent of the water department. So basically, we're kind of providing you with the foundation of the structure and then we would need to figure out how we can take the next steps and have someone who can be a little bit more involved on a day-to-day basis.
Becky, thank you. I know this has been many, many years we've been discussing this. And I appreciate the work that your board has done. I have a, I have a page of things for you, but I want to just open it up to the board and just take your temperature. How do you, you know, what do you think about these kinds of proposals for our community? Would anyone like to begin? Mr. Goodrich?
The, so this is becoming, I guess I'll say a few things. One, going back to the tie-in bond study, which is so important. The need for additional capacity is so apparent. There's even in the long-term capital plan that they laid out for investigation for new water sources. And in that, there's over $3 million, they suggest, to actually build that out. So the need for this is not only apparent, but it's in the long-term plan that we have, that there's a, there's a great need for this. Never mind the additional capital for the increased capacity for the, for the water, water storage tanks, which then we're talking about funding for that. It's also becoming much more the norm across the country. If you read stories about what happened in Texas after their terrible winter storm, suddenly, no, over a million people didn't have water. And these communities are talking about water offset and water banking type programs left and right. And we're not going to be alone. I know Becky mentioned some others, but Rehoboth and Medway and Plymouth. There's other communities right now doing this. It's, it's long-term, it's, it's going to become the norm. And this is the exact, I would say playbook, but it's, it's been so great to see the development and how we're using the same functionality and even, you know, very similar pricing structures that we're not going to be totally pricing folks out. We're going to be very much in the norm for what these other communities are doing. So just, I mean, Becky, thank you for the, all the years of, of work. And yeah, I'm really excited to kind of push this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Goodrich. Are there other comments from board, questions? Mr. Vanyani?
Sure. So Becky, I applaud you so much on the effort and your passion in this area. You've done so much for the town and for our board in doing this. And I just have, I love the concept of getting more money and investing more money to find more water and to help our, our water infrastructure. I see a lot of redundancies in these plans to what we're already doing. And I'm just, and I see some limitations in the plan that I just question, question why, why those policies are in there. Because there's, there's just other methods that we do now that we can, that we can use to raise more money for, for projects, right? Everybody that comes into the system has to pay a hookup fee, right? So instead of charging them $1,300 for this bank, we can increase the hookup fee. You know, instead of charging everybody another dollar for their bill every, every, what was it, month or year or whatever it was, just raise the rates. So I'm not sure I understand the method for using this banking instead of just using the, the enterprise funds that we have now. And a lot of the initiatives that we talked about are the initiatives of the water enterprise fund now anyways. They're looking for new sources of water. They're, they're, you know, cleaning lines, improving infrastructure, paying for, for surveys, you know, rebuilding our system essentially. So I, what I don't want to do is create a mechanism here that is going to not, you know, fight against the other tools that are in place to get stuff done. And, you know, I, I don't know why we, you know, many of these projects, I mean, even if you have that huge development, $300,000 doesn't pay for much. Can't buy land, can't fill pipes. You know, we just passed a $2 million project the other day. So I think this may put limitations on us actually fixing stuff as well. So, so conceptually, I love the fact of, let's get more money invested in our infrastructure. I just have some questions on whether this is the tool to do it when we do it through other methods as well. And I don't see the benefits really of this tool, yeah. So, and I, I just read it today. So, and I don't know as much about this as Andrew does in terms of the other communities doing this, so, so inform me.
Vanyani, thank you for acknowledging that you're new to the subject. Ms. Malama, would you like to inform him?
I never said that, Madam.
I'll do my best. So the difference is, or one of the differences, and Nancy can obviously speak to this much better than I can, and I am not entirely familiar. I don't really understand the Water Enterprise Fund, I'm not going to lie, and how that all works. I do know any, any town that has implemented this has had to set up a separate fund that those monies go into. And those monies can only fund projects that actually put water back into the system. So right now, there is money that comes out of the Water Enterprise Fund sometimes to, to fund these things, but it's not the primary focus of the fund. So when we looked at the mitigation fee, I mean, it probably took us more than half of the time we've been working on this to really nail down the fee. Because we wanted the fee to be something that would be palatable. But we also wanted it something to be, wanted it to be effective. So we were looking more at, you know, what are some of the low-hanging fruit? How can we more easily get water back into the system? It's not, well, yes, looking for new sources is a wonderful option. It's just, it takes forever, it's, it's long-term. So we looked at just the basics, going around town and retrofitting municipal toilets and, and toilets and homes. And that was a program that they did in, in Hingham, and I believe in Cohasset for a while. And we looked at the smart meters. Our goal is to get all of the homes in town and smart meters. And it's not until all of, we're all in smart meters that will actually see the impacts of making that change. And again, the smart meters would allow for more regular billing, identifying leak detection, people to more easily react to their water bill, getting your water bill quarterly. And so we looked at, okay, looked at the, the number of projects that were in the planning pipeline, and I probably started looking at this pipeline with Brad Washburn. So it's actually with Lorraine Harbaugh, or Laura Harbaugh was the first person to provide me with the, the timeline or the, um, the projects and the hopper. So we looked at those projects, how many, how many additional gallons per day? If we did a two-to-one offset or a one-to-one offset, a $5 fee, a $20 fee, how many toilets could they fund? How many smart meters could it? How many smart meters could it fund? Would that have a functional difference on our water system? And it would. So this ten dollar fee, again, with the, with the projects we had in uh in planned at the time would allow us to more than complete the smart meter project and it would allow us to um replace, and I don't have the number in front of me, but I can dig it up easily, quite a few toilets. That would save a ton of water and put that water back into the system.
Right. But Becky, yeah, but we're already doing the smart meter program.
We are, but in years and we're nowhere near, we're a third of the way there. So this would allow us with one development, we could finish that project.
Okay, I don't, how, Nancy, we've had two, at least two rounds of money go into the smart meters. I don't know how much money it was and
very twenty fifth of last year, we replaced twenty eight hundred meters out of seventy one hundred meters.
Okay.
Run that, but I know that Sean Anderson has been, you know, yearly, annually putting money towards smart meters.
Okay, but it is part of the initiative of the enterprise fund, I guess, is is my point. And um, you know, so to pull it out of that just seems uh not benef- as beneficial as as I would like it to be, I guess. I do like the point, though, that you said it's it's strictly forced towards replacing water, which you're right, that's not the sole goal of the enterprise fund. So, so that is one, you know, one, one point um that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I do think that, you know, certainly a next step will be, I mean, you make very good points, and I don't know and that much about the Water Enterprise Fund would be for me and I, or who, if there is someone else or another entity that takes this on to really work through that um and understand that and understand what it would take to set up this sustainable water resource fund. I mean, there's been a bill before the legislature every year for the last seven years to make it easy for towns to create these funds as opposed to, it's, it's, I don't think that there seems to be some more rigmarole to it now because you have to do it town by town. Um, but you know, there's currently a bill before the Senate um to provide more um support from the state level. Without, so we need to figure all of that stuff out, basically.
Andrew, I know you want to comment. I want to just pause for a second. I know that in our backup, Ms. Holt, our finance director, had some concerns about the structure. So Nancy, if you have a moment, would you just sort of, where are the, where are the flags that you see?
Um, I agree with Becky that it would be a revolving fund, so I think we could readily um set one up. It would just be a change to the general bylaws, um, section one oh two sixty revolving funds to add an additional revolving fund that the bylaw itself would specify what the revenue sources would be, what the uses would be, who could spend it. Any rules such as um, as Becky pointed out, that there'd be an assigned use within a year. My concern was that it would um have to be used within a year, and then that I don't agree with. The assigned use, I understand, um, I just want to make sure that it would roll because there could be years where there would be no development and there would be very little funds available, so you couldn't do anything of substance. And I wouldn't want to see those funds closed out. And then where would they close to? If it's a special revenue fund, getting it to close to the Water Enterprise Fund is a little dicey. Um, my other concern was with the additional one dollar on the billing cycle. To me, that's just a layering of fees, and we've talked about trying to eliminate fees in the town. And this just seems to be adding a fee on top of a very high water bill already. Um, I know people will be like, what is she talking about? She's the one who keeps saying to raise the rates. Uh, but I I don't think you should raise the rates and add a fee on top of it. I I don't think that's very fair to people. And I I fear that we could have something like a cable bill where you have all these separate fees on top of it. And I didn't know how you could defend separating that fee off away from the Water Enterprise when the rest of the bill was specified for the Water Enterprise. I'm sure there's something that could be done. I'm just not exactly sure how that would work out. So that was my concern with the 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 dollar fee per cycle, per billing cycle. I just, I think if you wanted, to Tony's point, if there's a project that you want to do, it should be built into the capital plan or it should be part of the operating budget so that it is part of the rate consideration and gets moved forward. That could be something separate and apart that you would want to do with the offsets, there's something completely different. But just hearing the discussion about the smart um meters, that's, I mean, you could always move that project forward by bringing it forward as a much larger capital project and outsourcing the meter replacement. I mean, we move slower now because it's an internal process. But you could outsource that and completely replace all the town, towns meters in one go. So I think that's um something else we need to consider.
Nancy, what's the, what's the downside of of if we were to do this offset proposal and putting it all in the enterprise?
I'm not, I wouldn't, I I agree with Becky that you would want to have a revolving fund for it if you were going to assess a separate fee because it isn't, it's specifically to replace the the um finite water source. That's what you're trying to control. It's not to build up the infrastructure. Um, and that was the other concern I had that I didn't put in the memorandum that I sent to you is that you are charging a very high um fee right now for connection to the water system. So I don't know if you could be challenged by developer saying, you know, you're you're charging me fourteen thousand dollars to hook up and you're charging me thirteen hundred dollars for this, you know, we're, would we get challenged? And would it be considered egregious or excessive? I think I'm losing my 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 word, so I'm So that that was another concern that I had. But um, I understand that the concept of the offset policies and is, you know, Becky pointed out, there, there are more and more of them are coming forward from com- communities. So I think we may be going in that direction. I just have a problem with it being on the bills as well. Um, and that our rates are so high and our connection fees are so high that we have to be very clear as to what this particular um fee is going to cover and why we are assessing it separately.
Um, Becky had a couple of other sort of drill down questions.
Do you mind if I just ask Nancy a quick follow up?
Oh, sure, go ahead, Becky.
So if we were to build it into the rate structure, we can't, like specifically assign it to certain projects, right? I mean, when it just goes into the enterprise fund, it goes into the enterprise fund that then covers a whole bunch of projects.
I I would think you would want to bring something, the way I would picture it would be, you would want to bring forward some type of a capital improvement that is specific to that.
Right.
That either you're funding it through the rates, through the operational budget, so it's an ongoing um project. It's like the the meters themselves that you would just put into the 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 actual operational budget to make sure that it moves forward or a capital plan that is specifically called um, capital project specifically called out for that. As uh Andrew pointed out, that's already on, there's art, there are some on the plan for looking for new water sources.
So if we wanted to do things other than smart meters, like retrofit old buildings or water conservation, education, or uh gray water reuse in municipal buildings, we would need to get those items on the capital plan in order for current customers to put monies toward those projects.
I think it depends on the value of the project. It might not need to be on the capital plan. Um, the discussion that we're going to have, the next agenda item on the um town meeting articles, the petition article for the rebate program. That would be something you would consider that maybe you want to build it into your rates and say, we're going to allocate twenty five thousand dollars every year and we're going to do it as a special article.
I see.
So it's coming out of the rates. That's how it's being funded, say, by retained earnings from the prior year's race. Um, but it's it's a finite amount and we can see how that particular project did because we can track it separately.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Karen.
So I had a question, um. I I just didn't understand. So you had proposed a hundred and ten gallons per day threshold.
Right.
Um, which I think the current standard is thirty five gallons per day per person. Is that right? Is that accurate?
Sixty five.
Oh, it's sixty five. Oh, okay, that explains it. Okay. But so if it's sixty, I I, like, I don't understand this.
I believe the one ten is a number that is referenced. And Sam Woods is on here. She, I I believe references it initially. Like, it's either in the the sewer. Is it in sewers or is it in septic, Sam? The one ten, is that some familiar to you? Could we unmute?
Oh, good. I know. I was hoping Sam would just
Woods from North and South Rivers Watershed Association.
Yeah, so if it's sixty five gallons per day per person, a four fam- a four person family is two hundred and sixty gallons per day. Is that correct? I didn't, I've got my calculator.
Well, so this, so, okay, so the the state standard or or goal is sixty five.
Yeah, so sixty five times
Yeah, but the one ten, we were trying to reference something else in another
Yeah, where's the one ten? Samantha, I would invite you to join our conversation because Samantha Wood is
Maybe I can do it. Can I do that? Am I asking?
I got it. I got it.
Please identify yourself for the board because this is official meeting.
Hi, my name is Samantha Woods. I'm the director for the North and South Rivers Watershed Association. And I think your question is, uh, where's the hundred and ten gallons per person or per day come from? And it's um, it's a septic system um used for bedrooms. So that's how they calculate how much, how to size a septic system, relaching. So they use a hundred and ten gallons per bedroom.
So which is fifty five per
Samantha, our, our, our advocacy content expert. But so when I looked at what you was, you were proposing, it was like, so you have a piece of land and you want to build a house with four bedrooms for your family. You're in this pool. You're going to have to contribute. Okay.
Yeah, that's, there's been a lot of talk about that, about where to set the threshold. Do we set a threshold? Do we, does this apply to single family houses? Does this only apply to large developments? At the end of the day, we really thought it it should apply to everyone who's putting an additional burden on to the water system.
Right, so if I decided to put an addition on my house and I'm going to add a bedroom.
Right.
I'm going to contribute.
You would pay the thirteen hundred. About the numbers, sorry.
Yeah. Ms. Karen?
Um, I just want to make a couple of comments. I think this is a great idea. I think it's well overdue. And as, you know, Becky has said at the, at the onset, they've taken it about as far as they can. And I think for us to sit here and have a conversation um about all the specifics is almost an effort in futility that we need some experts to come in and help us identify how to put together, you know, a really good mitigation program that's going to be effective to actually help us increase our capacity. Because that's, that's number one, right, is to find more sources of water. Um, so I would just like to suggest that, you know, we consider as a board, and I don't know if it's moving forward. You know, Jim, is it, is this fall on Kyle's plate now? I'm sure there are a lot of, if this is a big initiative in the state, there have got to be grants out there that can help us really put together a great mitigation policy that's going to directly impact our particular situation here. Um, because I think we can just sit here and go around and round and discuss this. And I know I'm not a water expert, and I think Becky raised her hand and said, hey, we've been doing this since two thousand and seventeen. We've taken it as far as we can, and they've done so much due diligence, and it's up to us to get it, get it over the finish line. So, that would be my suggestion.
I think it'd be Kyle, but you'd have to work very closely with Sean Anderson and the water.
And Sean, yep, yep. Because I know Sean supports it. We have a letter from Sean who supports this as well, really looking for a mitigation policy, but um anyway, those, that's my two cents on this topic. I'd love to see it come to fruition.
Yeah, thank you for pointing that out. We do have support from the water department of our town. So I guess the last thing we need is the temperature of the board is whether we think this proposal is worth taking it to the finish line. And I will a hundred percent say yes personally. Um, I don't know, Ms. Conley?
Yeah, what I'd like to say is that um, what I would like to see is for the, whatever, however this money gets raised, that it just not disappear. Um, and that, that's why I think, just off the top of my head, that a revolving fund um that is specific about where the money is to go and who spends it. And, you know, if, for example, we wanted to establish the revolving fund for these, these mitigation uh money to come into, that maybe initially it's to replace all of the meters with smart meters. And then when we're done with that, we reauthorize the revolving fund and for yet another very specific purpose so that people don't think that, you know, yet another amount of money, they're taking out of my pocket, who knows where it's going. And um, so I I just think that to sell it to the town, um, the revolving fund might be a better way to go, at least initially. And I personally, I I have a question about the the smart meters. Would smart meters apply to, um, let's just use an example, Central Park Housing? They apparently get one water bill. Um, if we were to, are smart meters going to be applied to each of the units at Central Park Housing?
That's a good question. Probably not. I imagine they would just do a one for one replacement for what's already there.
I think, I think Jim sort of knows where I'm going on this. I got a call from someone the other day who has a great interest in Central Park Housing and the uh low income housing in town. And he pointed out to me that by raising that top tier, he uh, the Central Park got hit with a a big water bill. And the truth is, when you look at those units down at Central Park, there's no way that those people are using more than their fair share of water. But it, because it has to be, you know, because of the tier that they're in. So I guess, you know, my question is, maybe that's too specific, but um, it just raised the question in my mind if if we're doing these smart meters, could we uh do smart meters at least for the public housing where they just get one bill and they get whacked by us increasing the 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 tier? I always thought of people as using, you know, inordinate amounts of water to fill their pool.
Well, they chose that when they made the develop, they only paid one hookup fee.
Right.
So they didn't put in, they could have put in as many meters as they wanted.
Central Park Housing, the old Central Park Housing?
Or any development.
Wait, wait, wait. When we converted Central School to um, housing, they have the option of doing separate meters?
I would imagine every development can put separate meters in. That's what happened at the one right over by uh Gunther Tootie's, right?
Right.
The guy, the guy only wanted to pay one hookup fee.
Right.
So, well, the the problem is you get hit with with the with the tiered pricing.
And a year and a half ago, we changed that policy, no longer allow the master meters. Um, but I imagine
Not allowing them going forward, right?
Right.
So, um, yeah. Let me, let me just interject. Becky, love the proposal, love the direction we're going in. What do we need to do next steps to facilitate this conversation?
You know, I'm not exactly sure. I mean, I think it needs, uh, because that, you know, the
Laughing.
I do, I have, I think what you need to do is you're going to need to hire a consultant to be able to access town files, be able to access town resources, be able to sit with Nancy, be able to sit with the water department's numbers to be able to interface with those, these other towns. Um, the water department itself does not have the resources to do this. I mean, their staff is so stretched as it is and they're going into what will likely be another very difficult season for them. So the idea of saying, hey, Sean, now this is yours, you know, Sean and I have worked very closely on this for years. But I I do think you'll need to bring in somebody, or maybe there is someone else. Uh, again, like an Ipswich is their town planner, not that Karen Joseph is looking to take this on, but
We got Kyle now.
I know, yeah, so and I don't, you know, if this would have been a thing that, you know, Brad Washburn probably would have figured out how to fit it in. So because I don't work for the town, I don't know exactly what that looks like.
Let me, let me take the temperature of the board. We're not voting, we're just taking a temperature. Does the board generally feel that the proposals brought forth tonight by our Water Resources Commission are worth pursuing? I know what I think, but I will defer to the board. What do you think? Mr. Goodrich?
I, yeah, I believe as as water commissioners, we should proceed with this general idea of water offsets and move forward, whether it's Kyle or someone else, to have something that we, that we all um, you know, feel good about around mitigation for water. I think we need to proceed on some sort of a program and try to have someone internally assigned uh to help move and get a more precise assessment of 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 exactly what what we can do and not do within within the law. But yes, as far as
Okay, Mr. Vanyani?
Um, I think what Andrew said is a lot different than what this plan is. Um, I I agree with Andrew conceptually that we need to figure out water mitigation. But this plan has a lot of questions and a lot of but this plan has a lot of questions and a lot of holes in it that I don't agree with. So I do not, you know, this, you know, every one of the specifics that we just talked about, I don't necessarily agree with, I don't agree with the number of a hundred and ten gallons, I don't agree with a dollar for period. I think there's a double taxation going on here, and I think there's going to be conflict of interest between the enterprise fund and this revolving fund. So I think a lot of it has to be vetted out before we just say, hey, let's go do it. And, you know, we're all water, gung-ho water, fixed water, which I'm, I agree with, but I don't know that this plan necessarily is what is gonna help us. So maybe once we go through all the details that we started to earlier and talk about each one of them and say, I like this one, I don't like this one, it gets to be formulated to something that we all agree with. But there are, there are definitely issues with this, and we're gonna hear it from people that try and develop in this town, that there's a double taxation. Right? What, you're charging me fourteen-hundred bucks for, for a hookup fee, and now you're charging me another five thousand dollars for this water fee. And these big ones are pie in the sky, right? A forty P is never gonna pay that. You know, they're gonna get out of paying three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. You're really gonna be hitting the one, you know, the single-family houses and the small developments. You know, add five thousand dollars of, an extra fee. So, conceptually, I'm all for figuring out ways to get more water, protect our water supply, but I don't know that this, the way that this is written up gets us there.
Okay, Becky, I will come back to you. I wanted to say for the rest of the board. Karen or Mara, would you like to chime in?
Yeah, I mean, I think I already chimed in. I, I agree with Andrew that I think we need to get to the next step and assess how to really get a solid mitigation plan in place. So we do address some of the concerns that Tony's bringing up as well. And, you know, I, I need more information when I'm looking at a hundred and ten gallons per day, two hundred and sixty gallons per day, and just really understanding the offset and the impact, so I'd rather kick it up another notch and get some additional input.
Okay, so you, you like the concept, but you want more details?
Yes, please.
Okay. Karen, did you want to add something?
No, same. I mean, more detail, I think I wouldn't kill this thing tonight. I think we should keep moving forward. Whether or not we actually ever do anything is another story, but. So I, I.
I think we have to. I'm really concerned at the levels of our usage right now and everything that's on the dock, you know, coming before us in the next couple of months, so we've got to do something quickly.
This is, this is a lot like some of the conversations happening elsewhere on, like the tobacco tax and the gas tax. When people start smoking less, that goes down. More electric cars, gas tax, now what are you gonna, how are you gonna fix the roads? So, at some point, when you're super water-efficient, but a huge new development comes in, and this is not, at least my understanding and my feeling, the spirit of it is not to compete with the enterprise fund, but to be in addition to, to help accelerate to, to help have that waterbank four, so they're not competing. They're actually trying to be, a dream to be a, a a water-neutral community. And to do that as, as effectively and cost-effectively as we can, when there is new development, to just say, okay, this is what we're gonna do to offset it.
Thank you. I a hundred percent agreeing with you, Mr. Goodrich, that this is, you know, we need to find, we're, we're, we're buttoned up against a a finite amount of resources, so, you know, this is to me a reasonable proposition. We've discussed sort of the holes in this conversation, but I did say that I would let Becky chime in, and I think Samantha is gonna jump out of her skin if we don't let her say something. Becky, first to you, and then to Samantha.
The only thing I just wanted to say in, in response to Tony's comments is that my hope would be that you, you know, this forum is tough for providing huge, complex proposals that have been worked on for four or five years, right? So my hope would be that whoever takes the next steps with this would be able to have more of a back and forth with all of you to really understand your concerns and provide you with information as to why this is built this way and what can be changed, and what feedback we've gotten from, you know, we have gotten feedback from developers on this, and Town Council has said very much that this is not a tax, it's a fee, so I, I do think and hope that those conversations would absolutely happen, and that what's on the paper wouldn't necessarily be what finally is the outcome, but the beginning of it.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's a very good point, Becky, is that this has been vetted, it's not precedent-setting. You know, those are my concerns, I, you know, I'm like, you know, all the things I had was like, oh, has anyone else done this? Commercial development, I still have concerns about that. I don't want to discourage development in our community. We have such a little, limited amount of commercial development. Don't think it's a major factor, but I, I was concerned about that. And then I love the idea of offsets for conservation. You know, figuring out how, how does that work? I love that. So Samantha, did you want to add, Tim?
Sure. First, the only place I was gonna jump was to my bed, which is, you can't see, it's behind the river. It's nine forty-seven. God bless you people for staying up all the time and doing these meetings. So obviously, we are very much in support of all water conservation that the town can implement. This particular water banking program has been in your water conservation plan, which was passed, you know, probably maybe in twenty sixteen, and then Becky's been working really hard on trying to move this along. And, you know, I guess the, the, the real challenge here is, is to try to maintain, as I think Andrew said, a net zero. You, you, you can't go up. So, how do you do that, right? You have to control the demand. And as you keep adding more development, that becomes increasingly more challenging. And so this is a, a real way for the town to control the demand, and to be able to say for every, every new gallon that's being taken from the system, we want to offset it by one gallon. I live in Hull, we have a sim, similar water banking program through the town's water system with Hingham. And it's been really an effective way to maintain demand for over, I want to say, two decades now. In fact, and, and decrease. Yes, so it can be a really effective means for it, and I don't think developers are surprised by it, because they have it in other surrounding areas. And so, so it, it, you know, they, in, in the community that I live in, they, they fill out a form that actually says how many gallons they're gonna create, you know, and then how much are they going to offset, and in, in our case, they had, you know, retrofits of toilets. People love it, right? The, the customers love it because they actually can see a benefit to themselves and their community. And I know just from the feedback, and I'm sure you get this too, the feedback I get from everybody when we say, please don't, you know, water your lawn, please manage the water system. What about all these other people moving into my house, you know? And, and it's true, there's more demand being created, but it, you know, it can be offset and managed through this. So other communities have done it, it is not without precedent, and I would encourage you guys to move forward, you know, is potentially possible, you could go get a grant, but if you could just, I, I think you've waited a long time to do this. I'm a little concerned right now that we're going through this reservoir raising project. They are part of the, the permitting authorities are asking, how, how is the town going to manage growth? You know, how are they gonna maintain the water supply? They may not be very inclined to provide additional support to any permits for any new water. If they, if you cannot prove that you can manage the demand. So I would, I really encourage you to think about moving this forward as quickly as you can.
Sam, can you provide us some historical data that you just spoke to with regards to the whole Hingham situation, and you know, it's been there for twenty years, and what kind of impact that mitigation program had, because that would be immensely helpful for me to understand what kind of impact it could potentially have for us as well. So I don't know if there's data that is easily accessible.
Yeah, well, you know, they've changed their water department, Hingham purchased it from the private developers, so I don't know exactly how much data they have, but look, I could certainly look into it and ask.
We can too on our side, okay.
AMAS has also done this. But I know Hingham for sure has kept their water demand, because when they went over their permit in two thousand and one, maybe it was even nineteen ninety-nine, they were under a decree from the state to reduce water demand, and that's when they instituted this program. And I'm sure it's not the only thing, I'm sure that they, I think they used it as well, frankly, to tighten up leaks in the system. So, you know, they went for some low-hanging fruit, but they definitely, they tied it to like one gallon to one gallon. Like you come in, you want this gallon, now you're gonna have to, well, we're gonna calculate how you reduce it on the other end.
Sam, thank you for staying up with us. Anything you provide us is always useful. So what I'm hearing is that the board generally feels like the concept is great, we need to figure out the financial structure that makes sense, and makes Nancy happy, because when Nancy's happy, we're happy. And that I really think that we need to bring our planning board into this conversation. Just based on what everyone, the input from tonight, is that, you know, this is a planning tool as well as a infrastructure development tool. So I think, Jim, we need to, to take this offline and figure out the next steps. But I think unless anyone disagrees strongly, if we can figure out the financial, like the billing, you know, how does it live, how does it work, mechanics, that the concept of one-to-one water offset is acceptable to the board. Are there any objections to that? I got one shaking, I got two shaking, I got two neutrals. Okay, we got three shaking, okay, we have. Personally, I am, I, I really applaud the group because this is, it's, it's a long slog, because there's a lot of details to work out on this. But, you know, we know our situation. You know it better than anyone, Becky. We have a finite amount of resources, and we want to make sure that we can appropriately provide for the future, so. I, I'm gonna ask Jim for a recommendation on how we proceed on next steps, because this is, there's a lot of moving parts here.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to convene probably Kyle, Karen, and the Water Department representatives to figure out where to go from here, and whether we'll need to bring somebody on and what that might cost.
Okay, and I would add Becky to that conversation, because she's most invested and knowledgeable.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we have, I mean, multiple consultants on board. I'm sure one of them is, is intimately familiar with this stuff, so. It should be a big ask to have them put some stuff together for us.
Okay, all right. Unless there's an objection, then we will direct our town administrator to put together a subgroup to take this to the next step and see how we can act, activate this kind of next step. Does that make sense?
Yes.
All right, great. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for your endless service to the town. Sam, thank you for staying up late with us, as always. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
All right.
Nice.
Way over schedule. Damn. All right, it's nine fifty-five. As I pointed out ahead of the meeting, we have a hard stop at eleven. We have to, damn, the whole, we're supposed to at nine thirty, or at ten thirty, no. Oh, no, we're still ahead of schedule, okay. So we have, the town meeting is the next thing, to discuss the consent warrant and to assign articles. So, get to Mr. Bedrow, wake up.
Just looking at my agenda, trying to figure out what schedule we're ahead of.
What the hell? No, we're supposed to be doing this at nine-ten, so we're wicked late.
So you will have.
We have town meeting next week.
You'll have in your packet a draft consent agenda. After the meeting of last week, we actually added a couple of things on there at the recommendation of the moderator, and then I talked. So I think the new ones, Collins Cove, we added. I think Dear Common, we added, and the two easements, we added at the end. To what we've given you previously.
So there are thirty articles on the warrant. Nineteen are on the consent, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, does the board have any objection to the proposed consent agenda items?
I don't have, am I on mute? Let me see. I don't have any objections, but I think you're gonna, right, well, they can always hold them and pull it out. Couple of them, I, I think, will definitely get pulled out, but that's, I guess. That's fine, yeah.
All right, sorry, I'm scrolling through.
I, I, to make one quick comment while you're looking, that, I think that, given the COVID situation that we're in right now, that this is prudent to do, but moving forward, I don't think the goal of town meeting is to rush through these things and not inform people, you know, we've got a lot of stuff going on in these enterprise funds, and I think it's worthy of a, you know, of five-minute conversation about them, there's a lot of money in there. You know, I think sometimes when we talk about these new infection policies that we're putting in place, it's important for the town to know about those, so I just don't want this to be the norm, the consent agenda growing from four and five articles now up to nineteen articles in an effort to, you know, to have a really fast town meeting. But it is different times right now, it's, it's spacing, it's, it's, it's people being nervous about meetings, so I, I kind of agree with you for this meeting.
Good point.
Very good.
Very good point. Any other comments? Yeah, I completely agree with you, Tony, that, you know, would I put all these in here under normal circumstances? Absolutely not. I'd love to talk. But I think that putting them in and allowing people to pull them out, if, if, if conversation is warranted, is, is prudent, given the state of.
Actually, twenty-one, right?
Twenty-one is Dear Common?
No, twenty-one articles.
Did I count wrong?
No, the number twenty-one.
There's nineteen consent.
And nineteen.
I have nineteen, yeah, so there's thirty total on the warrant. Nineteen are on the consent.
Okay, sorry.
How many are special? Four, five?
So the question for the board is, of the nineteen on the consent agenda, are there any that you feel need to be withdrawn and put on non, like, just regular, I don't know what it's called, regular consent, regular agenda? Or would you rather put them on here, and if somebody wants to, they can pull it off? All it takes is one vote. Are there anything, is there anything?
I'd rather have them pull it off.
Okay.
Like a motion?
Uh, yes, please.
Move to include the following articles in the consent agenda for April twelfth, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting. Article one, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, thirteen, fifteen, sixteen, nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine.
Motion by Mr. Vignani, is there a second?
Sorry, Tony, you left out seventeen and eighteen.
Yeah, I thought I said nineteen.
I thought so too.
Yeah, seventeen and eighteen, so.
As amended.
Second.
Mr. Vignani has motion, Ms. Kern has seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote. Ms. Cantfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Kern? Ms. Kern?
All right, I said yes, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. So we have the consent agenda, nineteen articles for annual town meeting next Monday. That leaves eleven consent agenda. Oh, wait, no, we still need to assign, right, Jim?
Yes.
Okay, is that the next order? Sorry, I'm deep in my backup. Okay, so, in the event that somebody holds any of these items, we need to assign which of our members is going to present. So uh one, compensation of elected officials, two, reports of boards and committees. Those two are, are pretty pro forma, pro forma, and I assume that we.
And I suggest that we just assign them all and.
One person?
No, no, all, all the articles.
Sign all the articles.
So.
If you go to page one twenty-six.
One through, okay.
If you go to page one twenty-six, um Lorraine did a nice job colorizing which ones are consent and which ones aren't.
Actually, Nancy did that. Thank you, Nancy.
Sorry, sorry, Nancy. Great job.
Okay, cool. I am all for efficiency. Okay, so article one, uh compensation of electric, oh man.
We'll start with the special. You'll do the four special.
Special, I'll do the specials. Yep. All right, article one of the annual. Um, I would assume it's me. How do you want to do this, guys? I mean, you guys are better at this than me.
You should do one, two and four at least.
Why does my backup go one, two, five?
No.
A list of what should.
One twenty-six, page one twenty-six.
The suggested consent agenda. And then further down is a listing of
Oh, okay.
That haven't been read also.
Okay, sorry. Okay. So what, I'm sorry, Tony, one, two and.
If you want to do three and four.
Capital and the operating. Okay. One through four.
I'll do capital if you want me to. I usually.
Yeah. So uh Mara, you do capital. I'll do um four, one, two, four. Okay, uh five waterways.
Where's Sean when you need him?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll prepare for five, six and seven or something.
Five, six, seven is Tony. Transfer station, water enterprise.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'll defer to the more senior member.
Everyone's. So Andrew, you are the liaison to waterways, right?
Yes.
And.
Oh, the water. Waterway, uh, sorry, but I was gonna do uh eight, nine, ten. Didn't you do five, six, seven, Tony?
Okay, so Karen, seven and eight.
Okay.
Andrew, nine. What did you say?
I'm confused, Karen, now.
Karen.
You said Tony was gonna do five through, through seven. Andrew was gonna do eight through ten.
Eight through ten, yeah.
Okay.
Revolving fund.
Why doesn't Karen do eleven, twelve, thirteen? She does CPC, right?
Sure.
Yeah.
K, K two does eleven, twelve, thirteen. Uh debt authorization for article fourteen, which is not consent. Um, Mr. Goodrich? Okay, Mr. Goodrich has article fourteen. Article fifteen is ma- uh consent, master general law, chapter ninety-one liability. I'm happy to take that. Let me write it down. Okay, um, all right, articles, article sixteen, uh consent, local option for vets. Who's our, uh, Tony?
Yeah.
Okay, Tony has sixteen and seventeen, both veterans. Uh, article eighteen is local accept, acceptance for deferral and recovery for betterments. Where does that land, James?
That's assessors. So Resley is with the assessors.
What's that? We have a liaison for assessors?
What one are we on? Eighteen?
Eighteen. Who does assessors?
I, I'll do it. I mean, we're not gonna, it's a consent one. I doubt that's gonna be.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm sure. Okay, so, so Tony gets sixteen, seventeen and eighteen. Uh, land acquisition nineteen. I'm happy to take that. And then I'll make Jim talk about it. Um, okay, big one. Article twenty, land acquisition, Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Uh, we are proposing this for municipal purposes. There's a lot of subtext to this. Who would love that? I'm happy to take it. I'm thinking Mr. Goodrich has something to say on the subject. Sorry?
Andrew's volunteering. He's got his pen raised.
He's got, he's like, true. All right, Andrew.
I love that property.
All right, Mr. Goodrich, you are now article twenty. Okay, um, article twenty-one, Dear Common, I'll take that because I'm on traffic rules. Um, twenty-two, revolving funds, general bylaws.
I'll take it.
All right, Ms. Conley. Twenty-three, waterways amendment. Who wants that? All right, Ms. Kern has twenty-three. Twenty-four, water conservation. Where's your pencil, Mr. Goodrich? Mr. Goodrich is generously donated to be on one, water conservation bylaw. Uh, North Situate Village Improvement, article twenty-five. Uh, you know, all these are planning, but I'm happy to take that one if known once, nor so twice.
I'll, I'll do it. I don't have any that aren't consent.
Oh yeah, make Tony work, come on. All right, so number, article twenty-five is proposed by planning. Tony will take that. Article twenty-six, signs. We know exactly who's taking that.
Hot topic.
All in favor of Mr. Goodrich. Wait, he went off video.
Left the meeting.
Okay, signed amendment goes to Mr. Goodrich. Uh, number twenty-seven, fair housing affordability standards.
I'll do that.
Take it.
Ms. Karen will take that. Article twenty-eight, grant of his, uh, grant of easement, which is under consent for Spanish Road. I think that comes to me now. See? All right, I'll take article twenty-eight. And article twenty-nine is release of easement for Gardner Road. I'll take those as well. And that takes us to citizens petition for the water conservation, which we all know um uh Ms. Burke is going to amend, but it will be a conver- conversation. So is anyone who would like to take article thirty?
Let me ask a question. We voted against it, did we not?
We did not because.
We all vote against it?
I, no, four, it was four, one.
I got another one.
It was a four, one vote. Ton- uh, Mr. Goodrich was opposed.
Yeah, I mean, to be, wait, wait. He was opposed or he was in favor of it?
He was in favor of the amendment. We voted to not support it.
Okay, so I think it's only fair to say that if there's one person in favor of it and all others are against it, I don't see how the people who are against it should have to stand up and defend it.
So you don't defend it, you just, you just defend the position of the board.
Uh, I mean, someone from the majority should do the article. I think that's Karen's point.
Yeah.
Well, I was sort of making the opposite point.
Yeah, she was making the opposite, but I agree with you.
The negative?
I think that whoever is assigned to it should support what the vote of the board was.
Well, you have to because that's.
Right, exactly. And then somebody from the audience say, what did the opposition think? And then Mr. Goodrich can stand up.
Give a minority one point.
Yep.
So, I mean, it's a little clouded because she's gonna amend it and we did not have a chance to review or.
Are we gonna have an opportunity to see that, Jim, or not until on the floor?
He's supposed to be getting a copy of it and discussing it with the moderator, so I, I don't know, but he wanted to see it in advance. I would think if she participates in the moderator's meeting, she'd give him a copy of it.
Then, then could I suggest if we put off assigning this until the moderator's meeting?
Well, I'll do it. I'll do it.
Doesn't mean I'm happy. All right, Tony, I'm either, yeah, Tony, if you like it, you have it.
Okay.
So Tony will be prepared to speak on our vote on the information we had at the time. And then we will revise. I mean, we don't, we don't, we're not gonna vote on the amendment, so it'll be on the floor.
Uh, what I could do, what I could do is add this to your six-thirty meeting agenda.
Uh, that's a good idea.
Prior to town meeting so that you could discuss it with the amendment at that time, if you decide to change your minds.
That's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, thank you, Lauren. That's a great plan.
Okay.
Okay, so Tony, you're assigned. And you know, we will revisit this knowing that we're gonna have our um amendment. Okay, cool. All right, hold on, I gotta go back to the beginning. All right, great. Thank you, everyone. Um, moderator's meeting, Jim, is Thursday at two. I have not received anything about that yet. I just heard about it.
Well, the agenda went out. It's just.
All right, I gotta go look at my.
It's just one sentence.
Moderator's meeting.
The Zoom link. Time, the place, the moderator's meeting, and it says town meeting warrant articles to be discussed. That's the.
Is it a virtual meeting or do I have to be in person?
It's a virtual meeting. It looked like Zoom to me.
Oh, good.
Meeting.
Good, because, uh, because I have issues. Okay, all right, so we had, we're, it's now eleven, no, ten, twelve. And we've done our consent and assignments and now we need to read our Arbor Day proclamation. Madam Clark.
Yes, let me bring it up here.
Maybe I should donate my tree in honor of Arbor Day, Jim.
That would be lovely.
Figure out where to put that thing.
We have a library looking for plantings. We're scrolling, we're scrolling.
We are.
So it is, is moderator's meeting is April second at two o'clock, the Azu.
April second?
April eighth.
That would have been yesterday.
We're late, otherwise.
All right.
And two, it's in an email from the first.
Tough crowd.
Is the link.
The drain layers licenses.
Keep going, Madam Clark.
I'm going.
No, it's ahead of that.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh no, it's up. Yeah, it's ahead of it.
It's after the warrants.
I think that's. Just a minute.
Who's left with us?
Page one fifty-one.
Ruth, thank you for staying up with us.
It's page one fifty-one, Tony?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can read it if you want.
Sure, go ahead.
Uh, Arbor Day, I, I've misspoke a hundred times tonight, but I'll try it again. Um, Arbor Day proclamation, whereas in eighteen seventy-two, S. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska, Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day he set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was the first absorb, uh, observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide uh habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the town of Situate has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Situate, do hereby proclaim April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one Arbor Day and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge citizens to plant trees, to gladden the heart and promote well-being of this and future generations. Signed by the Board of Select, signed by the Select Board.
You're here.
I love it. Is that a motion? Is that just proclamation?
Just a proclamation.
It's a proclamation, which I heartily support. So as a daughter of a paper salesman, I absolutely think that's fabulous. So thank you, Mr. Vignani, for sharing that with us. Um, and we will, sorry, I took my glasses off. So we are on to new business.
We have another proclamation.
We're not gonna read that, that.
No, we don't have to read that yet. That's, that's where your information and will be included in the ceremony on the date of the event. Is that correct, Lori?
That's right, yeah.
There you go. If you want to read it, Tony, go ahead.
No, I'm.
For those that are still up with us, it was, uh, we're anticipating a proclamation that will be read on uh Easter Rising Ceremony on the twenty-fifth of April. So so we are on to new business, which is to discuss vote Hawker peddler license renewals for Burt's Ice Cream. Do I have a motion?
Would the Board of Selectmen approve to renew the Hawker peddler's license to Burt's Ice Cream for the twenty twenty-one season?
Record. Moved by Mr. Vignani, second on Ms. Kern. Further discussion seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Uh, motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much. We now move on to discuss, discussion vote of a livery license renewal for coastal livery. Is there a motion?
Would the Board of Selectmen approve the renewal of taxi livery license to coastal livery transportation services?
Moved by Mr. Vignani. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by, I think, Mrs. Karen. Okay, sorry, I'm on two screens here. Uh, any further discussion seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. We now move on to a discussion vote of drain layers licenses, renewal of drain li- layer licenses, which have been pre-screened by our DPW for um, uh, you know, compliance with safety and other concerns. So do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, I've read enough.
You can read better than I. Move to approve renewals of drain layer licenses for GFM Enterprises Incorporated, Cryon Landscape Contractors, David Flynn, Topman Enterprises Incorporated.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Kern, second by Ms. Conley. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motions carry five-zero. Thank you very much. We are now on to.
There's one more. Wait, da, 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 there's one more. Move to approve a new drain layers license. It's a new one.
I know, we're on to the new one. Okay.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were moving on to the next.
Do I have a motion for a new drain layers?
Yes. Move to approve a new drain layers license for Espirito Environmental Services.
Moved by Ms. Kern. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Conley. Is there further discussion? Backup is included in all of our backup and this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
Yes.
Motion carries five-zero. We are on to other business, which brings us to liaison reports, which I alluded to many, many hours ago. Do any of the members have a liaison report they would like to include at this point? Nope, everyone's gone, no, hard no. Okay, so correspondence.
Actually, I do, actually, one thing. I did ask the board to just let me know their feeling on uh parking signs on three A. I only heard from two out of four of you, so um, if the other two could just let me know, I can let Jim know and hopefully we can move forward on taking care of that issue down by Rote Marine.
Thank you, Ms. Kern. Please comply with the request of your fellow board members.
I'm sorry, Mara, I, I'm just, that was to provide feedback regarding parking at Rote Marine?
No, it's uh, it's parking on the, the uh rest area on three A near Rote Marine.
Okay, sorry, I just need to know.
Yeah, no, no, yes, I got it. Nope, I, I understand.
Okay. Any other further liaison reports? Then I will look to Madam Clark to tell us about our correspondence.
Uh, yes.
Go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
That's okay. Ellen Casper read the email that she sent to us, uh, so that is done. Um, Plymouth County uh cares sent us their update on municipal disbursements. Uh, Situate to date or as of three eighteen twenty-one had received one point six eight million dollars, which I think is kind of where we were before in my memory, but um, and we received a very thoughtful, interesting letter from David Dauphine um regarding the closure of the North South River Clam Flats. Uh, the, as we all know, the Division of Marine Fisheries notified. Uh, the, as we all know, the Division of Marine Fisheries notified Situate Marshfield of the closure due to US FDA. Requirements for shell fishing, handling, et cetera, as it relates to interstate transport. It, it was a very thoughtful letter, and I think that, um, if the town could possibly contact, uh, US FDA for, um, some clarification as to. The possibility of opening those clam flats for recreational shell fishing. I think he made some very good points, and I would hope that we could try to help them out there with that problem. And I do want to dispel, there is, there is, uh, some misinformation out there, that it's because the Situate wastewater treatment plant is not doing a good job. In treating the, the wa- the wastewater, which is not true. Um, so I just want to clarify that for people who may think that that is the case, it is not. Uh, we seem to have gotten caught, caught up in a USDA, FDA regulation, and we need clarification, so, and that was it.
Jim, I, I'd like to just turn to our town administrator, just give an update on what's happening with that whole shellfish in the North River?
Yeah, again, this is an FDA requirement, it has nothing to do with the state or the water quality in the North River, which is one of the most tested bodies of water around. Uh, we've met with Congressman Lynch, uh, he has put this on the top of his to-do list, I know Mike. The harbor master, Mike DeMaio over in Marshfield, has been spearheading this, so we're pushing all the buttons we can, uh, to get this lifted. It seems to be really almost a confusion between commercial and recreational, um, but last week, talk, Karen, it was in the hands of Congressman Lynch in his office, and we've followed up with them, and I have not heard back.
And has anyone responded to, uh, David Dauphine's letter to us?
I've not.
No, I think we just got it, so, Jim, if you could make sure.
We've had it for about a week and a half. So.
It was a, it was a great letter, and actually, it really helped me to understand exactly what you just said, Jim, you know, the commercial and interstate or intrastate issues of transporting the shellfish, so. But yeah, it was a great letter.
Yeah.
Okay, so Jim, why don't you and I offline, we'll respond to Dave, because he's a tremendous asset to our community on these issues, and, uh. Yeah, thank you, anything else, Ms. Clark?
That was it.
That was it, okay, so, I've got my glasses on, we are on to approval of meeting minutes. I would like to commend Lorraine for fully documenting Jim's comments on the Macarena. And I would like to see if there is a motion.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
It was awesome, anyone like to accept the minute?
It has to be part of the historical record.
Fully documented with Jim concerns, uh, Jim's concerns about the Macarena, uh, is there a motion to accept the minutes?
Move to accept the meeting minutes for select board meetings held on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, and March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. And further, a motion to accept and not release the select board executive session minutes for March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one, since the matters discussed are still pending at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Vignani, a motion made, is there a second?
That could.
Second by Ms. Kern, any further discussion? Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Thank you very much, motion carries five zero, which leads us to our final item for the meeting, which is the adjournment and signing documents. So, as you heard many times tonight, we need to get in and get some stuff signed, so that we can continue the business of town of Situate, so, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn and sign documents.
Alright, motion by Mr. Vignani, second by Ms. Kern, any further discussion, seeing none, roll call vote required.
Ms. Canfield?
Yes.
Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Ms. Conley?
Yes.
Ms. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero, it is now ten twenty-six, I adjourn this meeting.